Before we get started, there's several speaker cards that just say "public comment." We have two different... we have a public comment at the very beginning of the meeting, but then we have public comments on items on the agenda. There's so many that say "public comment." Do you mean to be as part of the agenda as we talk about different topics? Or do you want to speak before we even get started practically? Anybody?
Ed, I know a number of them are Latino parents are for the public comments period at the beginning.
At the beginning, okay. Okay, we'll go with them at the beginning. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can you stand for the pledge of allegiance? Dr. Cash?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Spanish translation?
Yes. Muy buenas tardes. Para las personas que deciden escuchar la traducción e interpretación de esta junta, tenemos los aparatos disponibles ahí afuera de esta puerta, están en una mesa. Si gustan pueden ir para ellos. Gracias.
Thank you. We have headsets for the hearing impaired if you need one, we have them. Dr. Cash, introductions, proclamations, presentations or recognitions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. Couple of brief comments. First, I'd like to introduce two people. We'll hear about one of them later on, and they are two new administrators for the Santa Barbara Unified School District. The first is Miguel Gonzalez, who will be the Assistant Principal at Alta Vista-Lacuesta High Schools. Miguel, could you please stand? Welcome to Santa Barbara, Miguel. Miguel has recently spent his career in Santa Maria. He's attending one of the finest universities in the world, earning his doctorate at the University of Southern California. That had absolutely nothing to do with the reason why he was hired. But we're excited to have Miguel join us. We know he's going to be a great addition both at Alta Vista and La Cuesta. And I'm going to save my comments about the other new administrator for the actual agenda item. And instead, with your permission, I'll go on to my report.
Thank you.
As board members know, we had successful graduation ceremonies at Alta Vista, Dos Pueblos, La Cuesta, San Marcos and Santa Barbara High School, where we graduated over 1,500 students. And additionally, we promoted over 800 sixth graders and 1,200 eighth graders. It was quite a week of celebration for our school district. I was fortunate enough to attend La Colina Junior High School, where they had a spectacular ceremony for promotion that was run by the ASB President, Jack Spies, and it was just fantastic. And Ms. Limón and I were there and got to listen to some great student performances. It was really a great day of memory. And then we were on to Dos Pueblos High School, where Dr. Paz joined us. And it's also a great ceremony. It was great to be there. I had... it was my first Dos Pueblos graduation ceremony for a decade, and the last time I was there was when I was the principal. So it was a lot of fun. This week, we started our Elementary Summer Institute, a professional development at Washington Elementary School, and we've had over 120 elementary school teachers attending. A lot of great work happening. I was over there yesterday. I plan to be over there tomorrow and Thursday as well. And we're also providing restorative approaches training to our secondary teachers, and we've had about 100 teachers at San Marcos High School attend the training these past two days. And additionally, we will have some of our math teachers working this week to continue the work on the new Common Core math courses that we'll be implementing this fall. As board members know, there's lots of construction going on in our district this summer. There probably isn't a campus that isn't going to be touched in some way. We're taking advantage of the summer recess in order to get as much work as possible done. And probably most excitingly, the two large projects that we're working on are the new libraries at Adams and Washington Elementary School. And so we will have an opening ceremony, ceremonial dig, with some gold shovels and hard hats for board members coming up. Mr. Het Young's arranging that, and when we get the date out, we'll make sure everyone can attend and dig some dirt. We're continuing our work also on water conservation throughout the districts, and we really appreciate the fact that we have members of our community that help us be good conservers of water, because sometimes our irrigation controllers don't do what we ask them to do. And so it's always great to hear from our community if in fact we're overwatering or watering the sidewalk, because then it gets us out there and gets things quickly fixed. And finally, I want to remind board members that our facilities master planning process continues. Had a number of meetings, a lot of great conversations, and LPA, our architecture firm that's facilitating the process, will be making a presentation to the board in July. And so with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Board comments, correspondence? Dr. Paz?
I had the opportunity to attend La Cuesta and Alta Vista's graduation. It's the first time that I attended, and I want to thank Ms. Wagonit for the opportunity. And I just want to say that it was probably... I just felt it was the best graduation. No disrespect to my alma mater, because I love it. But I thought the format is so, so nice that we get the opportunity to hear about each of the graduates, which unfortunately, we don't have that opportunity for all of the other high schools. But I just want to tell you, thank you for that opportunity and for putting in a graduation that really reflects the meaning of graduating and all the challenges the students face. So thank you once again.
Mr. Limón?
So besides having the opportunity to attend incredible graduations last week, the excitement watching parents so proud for the milestones that their students are achieving, that is always one of my favorite moments as a school board member. I also had the opportunity to attend the first part of the professional development for our teachers this Monday. And I have to say, if you have not had a chance to see the video of our elementary principals dancing, and this guy right here, Assistant Superintendent Handel, dancing and being happy, it was quite motivational, to say the least. So it was great to also see all the teachers there. I know a few of us actually popped into different workshops, and so I think it's important to recognize that school is out for students, but so many of our teachers, of our educators, are still doing work, refining their practice, learning more to come back in August, ready to serve our students. So thanks to everyone that was involved with that.
I also had the opportunity to go to the elementary school, Adelante, for graduation. It was great to see speeches in both Spanish and English, and to see the sixth graders coming out of that school as bilingual. Very, very impressive. And I had Glee Valley Junior High School, and I had San Marcos High School. And I think I mentioned to Dr. Cash, in my time on the board, it's the first time that I've seen such great decorum at our graduations. It was very professional done at every school that I went to, and very dignified, very serious, and you could tell by the reactions of the students how thrilled they were that they were going through the process. So it was really a good series of graduations. I also went to sessions at the training yesterday and today, and the same as Mr. Limón, to see all the teachers there really diligently learning new things. I mean, they are students sitting in kids' little chairs all day long. They're going to learn firsthand, number one, what it's like to sit in those chairs, and number two, what it's like to watch a screen up on the wall and keep your attention and even be able to read it sometimes. So it was a good learning experience from that viewpoint for the teachers, let alone what they're learning and the techniques they're learning for Common Core and how to educate our children. It was very... it goes on all this week at Washington School. It's a very in-depth training, one again, one of the most professional I've seen in the last five or six years. Okay. Announcement of closed session items. On B1, we will take action under item F2. For B2, we'll take action under F1. On B3, there was a motion to deny the appeal for inter-district transfers, 2014-15-5. Motion by Paz, seconded by Idelson. It passed 4 to 0 with one absent. B4, there was no report to make. And B5, there is no report to make. We'll go on now... oh, public comments. C9. Ms. Idelson?
Yes. For public comment, there'll be three minutes if... in English, and then...
How many are there?
Okay, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's eight.
Okay. If you can hold it to two minutes, that'd be great, but we'll give you three. But if you can hold it for two, that'd be wonderful.
And if it's translated, then an additional equal amount. So I'll read three names, and then if you can just know that you're coming up next after... and excuse me if I mispronounce. First, we'll have Rafael Martinez, and second, Hilda Ramirez, and third, Lydia Vega. So could we call Rafael Martinez?
Yep.
Yes. And I will alert you when you have 30 seconds left.
All right, thanks. Hola a todos. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre Rafael Martinez. Okay. Miembros del Consejo Ejecutivo y Administradores del Distrito Escolar, soy padre de familia con dos hijos, asistiendo a las escuelas de dos pueblos y Goleta Valley. Les damos mucho crédito por haber incluido tantas tantas medias constructivas en el Plan LCAP para levantar el rendimiento académico estudiantil. Es muy claro que el plan es el resultado de mucha atención y dedicación a los administradores del distrito. En el contexto de servicios escolares para los padres, tuve una experiencia muy positiva tomando la clase "Proyecto para Padres." Ahora, cuando se trata de el Plan LCAP, nos hemos dado cuenta que el plan incluye la posición de director de servicio a los alumnos-aprendices de inglés. Esto está bien. Sin embargo, también nos dimos cuenta de que Padres Unidos había recomendado que el papel de dicho puesto también se debería de dedicar al apoyo de los padres. Esto es muy necesario para poder planear y proporcionar servicios efectivos para los padres en la escuela. Ahora, es tiempo para implementar todas las medidas que se han comprobado que funcionan bien. Los fondos se pueden usar de una manera más efectiva dirigiendo y guiando a las escuelas en prestar el mejor servicio para cerrar la brecha ejecutiva con los alumnos de aprendizaje de inglés. Sin embargo, no olvidemos que muchos de los padres no tienen la menor idea de cómo ellos también pueden participar en los asuntos escolares. Para finalizar, nosotros padres creemos que la posición de director de servicios de alumnos de aprendizaje de inglés también necesita incluirse los servicios para el involucramiento de los padres. Muchas gracias por tiempo.
Thank you.
I'm going to repeat it in English.
Members of the school board and administrators of the school district, my name is Rafael Martinez, and I am a parent with two children attending Dos Pueblos and Goleta Valley Junior High School. We give you much credit for having included so many constructive measures in the LCAP to raise the students' academic achievement. It is very clear that this plan is the result of a lot of attention and dedication on the part of district administrators. In the context of school services for parents, I personally had a very positive experience taking the Parent Project classes. Now, when it came to the LCAP, we have realized that the plan includes a position of Director of English Learner Services. That is very good. However, we've also noticed that Padres Unidos had recommended that this position also had the responsibility of overseeing parent support and involvement. We agree, because it is very necessary in order to plan and provide effective services for parents at the schools. It is time to implement all these measures that have proved to work effectively. Funds must be used in a more effective way, directing and guiding the schools on providing the best service to close the achievement gap with EL students, and not forgetting that many parents do not know how they can also participate in school activities. Thank you very much for your time.
And next, we have Hilda Ramirez. Please.
Members of the school board district officials, my name is Hilda Ramirez. I have three children in Santa Barbara School District, and I'm a member of Padres Unidos. I'm here to say a few words of encouragement to Ms. Helen Rodriguez and her team of specialists, who are working with our special education students and their parents. I know that we have many Latino children in special ed, and I know that Mrs. Rodriguez is concerned about why there are so many Latino students in special ed, and she has been trying to get to the root of the problem. All of her staff came out to the Padres Unidos program on special ed, and they stayed late answering so many questions that our parents needed to ask. In my case, it was Parent Project that opened my eyes as a parent to the reality of what sometimes we don't want to accept, to really know what's going on out there in the world that can put our children at risk. My daughter has been assigned to special ed classes where she was unmotivated, doing poorly, and was not attending regularly. I had also taken Padres Adelante class, so I used what I learned and went to school to advocate for my daughter to be reassigned to regular classes, except for one special ed resource class. I met some reluctance to do that, but once it was done, I saw my daughter start doing great in school, and her attendance problems vanished. Because of my involvement in Parent Project and Padres Adelante classes, I got my children involved in Future Leaders of America, and I also began regularly attending PTSA EE meetings and was elected to ELAC. Thank you for providing us the help we need to find solutions to help our children succeed in school. And all this awareness and knowledge makes us stronger and more positive, knowing that there are others who are able to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Lydia Vega, and after she, Jose Vasquez and Mark Chetillo.
Estimados miembros de la Mesa Directiva, padres y miembros del público. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lydia Vega. Yo soy madre de un hijo que asiste a la Colina Junior High. Vengo para apoyar a las recomendaciones del CAPE de Padres Unidos, en particular, la capacitación de los padres. Okay, gracias.
Still members of the school board, parents and members of the public. Good evening. My name is Lydia Vega. I'm the mother of a son that attends La Colina Junior High. I'm coming here to support the recommendations to LCAP of Padres Unidos, particularly the training for parents.
En nuestro distrito escolar de Santa Barbara, necesitamos más capacitación. Nos gustaría que tuviéramos más clases como las de Padres Adelantes y Padres Project para capacitarnos, para ayudar a nuestros hijos, y de esta manera involucrarnos más en las escuelas donde asisten nuestros hijos.
In our school district of Santa Barbara, we need more training. We would like to have more classes like those of Padres Adelante and Parent Project to train ourselves so we can help our children, and this way get more involved in the schools where our children attend.
Como padres, tenemos la obligación de hacer esto, pero necesitamos saber cómo.
As parents, we have the obligation to do that, but we need to know how.
Si los padres no sabemos el sistema educativo de este país, será casi imposible el ayudar a nuestros chicos. En particular, gracias a clases como la de Padres Adelante, ahora me siento que voy de la mano con mis hijos, por el mismo camino, y saben qué, hasta la universidad.
If we, parents, don't know the educational or don't understand the educational system of this country, it will be almost impossible to help our children. Particularly, thanks to classes like Padres Adelante, now I feel that I am holding hands with my children and following the same path, and you know, all the way to the university.
Quiero que más padres se beneficien con estas clases que nos capacitan para tener más armas con que luchar, para empujar con inteligencia a nuestros hijos. Muchas gracias por su atención y de antemano por el apoyo que sé que se nos dará. Que tengan muy buenas noches y que soñen con nuestras peticiones. Muchas gracias.
I would like more parents to benefit from these classes that get us trained, so we have more tools with which continue the struggle to push the intelligence of our kids. Thank you very much for your attention, and I want to thank for the support that I know you will be giving us. I hope you have a good night and that you dream with our petitions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Jose Vasquez.
Good evening, members on the school board and district administrators. My name is Jose Vasquez. Our son just graduated from DP last Tuesday, and he was an special educator student. And also I have a daughter who is an engineering academic. I wanted to take a few minutes to say thank you and keep with the good work in the Special Education Department. We know that is not an easy job to do. There is a lot of parents like us that we need to know and understand the system, how that works, including knowing how the students are evaluated and about IEP. And many parents don't know what IEP is and what they do to help. That is important for us to learn how the benefits for our children and how to do the best we can do, even with some things that we are not sure about. Furthermore, we learn and use to... we learn better than our children will do in school. Recently, I attended to the Padres Unidos annual program on special education. Your special education staff came up and informed parents, everyone took turns and explained to us what about the area and special education. Please continue with these kind of things, because there was a time when I didn't know where to go, where to ask questions. But once I learned how to get involved and get informed, things changed for better. In closing, I want to say a big thank you to Mrs. Helen Rodriguez and her staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Mark Chetillo, and followed by Rosio Jimenez.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Cash, members of the administration, parents, teachers, students. My name is Mark Chetillo, and I am the president of the Open Alternative Education Foundation. We are the PTO for the Open Alternative School. And I wanted to appear here tonight and bid you a good summer and give you a little wrap-up on our year. For those that may not know, the Open Alternative School is a community... it is a school of choice that the school district has sponsored for nearly 40 years now, where students and families from within... anywhere within the Santa Barbara Unified School District may bring their children for our K through 8 education. It's a progressive school, and we seek to engage families and parents with their students' education, much like we've heard discussed and just in looking at the LCAP and our Common Core curriculums. I think what the Open Alternative School is bringing is an option for the community, for families who want to be more engaged and participate. And our experience has been that it's a fabulous opportunity for both our students and our families. It's been a very successful and exciting year at the Open Alternative School. The year end is always busy. It starts fast, and it just keeps going faster and faster, culminating with the campouts that we all had as part of our outdoor education program. All the classes went out. And then we had an all-school meeting where all of the families are invited, and this year, we invited some alumni, some students, that had graduated from OAS, and now we're somewhere in high school, somewhere in college and universities, and somewhere out in the working world. And it was a fabulous testament to OAS's educational program, because every piece of it, from the plays to the field trips to the campouts to the theater performances and the songs and singing and core group sharing ideas, the broad diversity of students and perspectives that are present at OAS, all contributed to these kids' education and their experience. And every one of them had very, very strong memories and appreciation for OAS. We're going to try and get that up. We videotaped it, it needs some editing, and then we're going to try and get it up so other folks can enjoy it. I wanted to offer a few specific appreciations, first to Mitch Torino, who came and pinched hit as our interim principal this year, this spring.
30 seconds.
He did a great job, and I think everybody just adored Mitch, and he just fit right in with the OAS community and really supported all of us when we needed it. And I wanted to acknowledge and appreciate the school board and your support for us. As a result of the transfer policy issue, we did have six new students come and join us for next year, and we're going to continue our recruitment effort. And I look forward to checking back in with you in the fall and having OAS be able to report on a future progress and chart our course.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rosio Jimenez.
Mi nombre es Rosio Jimenez, y quiero darle a la Mesa Directiva buenas noches y a todos los padres. Para mí, quiero venir a dar las gracias al equipo de la señora Helen Rodriguez de Educación Especial, ya que mis hijos vienen de un distrito que es De Hope, y desafortunadamente nosotros no tenemos esta clase de ayuda. Tengo cuatro hijos, y una ya está en la universidad, otra que se va a ir a la Santa Barbara. Entonces, conforme han cambiado de distrito, ha sido mucha la diferencia.
Good evening. I want to desire good evening to everyone, to the board members and everyone here. I want to start by saying thank you to Helen Rodriguez and her team. I have four children, and we come from the Hope School District. And unfortunately, the kind of help that we found here, we didn't have at Hope.
At Hope District.
Oh, at Hope, Hope District.
Hasta que lleguen mis hijos a la Colina o...
Yeah. So until my children get to La Colina or Santa Barbara Junior High, they cannot receive the services that they receive at these junior highs.
Una de las razones que estoy aquí es porque tuve la fortuna de... hace seis años, mi hija, la que ya está en la universidad, de tomar la clase de "Proyecto para Padres", y eso fue de casualidad, porque en la escuela no nos informaban qué estaba pasando. Ahí fue donde empecé a saber cómo podía yo ayudarle a mi hija. Muy afortunadamente que la pude guiar, pero seguimos teniendo los mismos problemas, porque mis otros dos niños también tienen el mismo problema. Entonces, hasta que no lleguen, yo creo, a la Colina, no vamos a poder solucionar los problemas. Pero quiero darle gracias, porque estas pláticas o talleres que dan en las escuelas, especialmente Santa Barbara, a muchos padres nos ayudan y podemos guiar a nuestros hijos, como dijo la otra mamá, hasta la universidad, y esperemos que siga siendo así. Y yo estoy muy agradecida con Santa Barbara, porque he podido, con todas estas puertas que se me han abierto, he podido ayudar a mis hijos. Gracias.
I was very fortunate that six years ago, when my oldest daughter, who is now at the university, got to the... got to the Santa Barbara Unified School District, by coincidence, because I wasn't informed about, or we were not informed about these courses, I took a Padres, a Parent Project course. And that's how I learned how I could be more effective helping my daughter. Unfortunately, I continued to have problems with my two youngest children. And I won't be able to have those services provided to them until they get to junior high and they enter the Santa Barbara Unified School District. I'm very thankful to the Santa Barbara Unified School District and Mrs. Rodriguez's help and teamwork.
I think I'm going to say that in English. One of the last things, when my daughter had her IEP, she's going to go to Santa Barbara High School, and her last IEP was last week. And one of her team members was there. And she's been with me for the past four meetings. It's a lot of support. I never had so much support. Even she called me and she said, "How you doing?" And "Is she ready to go to Santa Barbara High School?" And "What can we do for you? Is there something that I can do for you?" I never, ever, ever felt that in the past, I don't know, with my older daughter and ever, in any other district. So I really, I hope you guys can keep those services for us and for all the parents that are out there that they don't know where it's in IEP, when they have special ed kids. And sometimes they're there because someone made the wrong choice. That's what I learned from my oldest one from La Colina. They tell her, you know, "What are you doing here? You're not supposed to be in special ed." So they pulled her out of special ed. So I hope you guys can continue with this support for all these parents that we don't know how they, sometimes the system works, but we're learning. But we need those classes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And next up, Lourdes Martinez and followed by Carmen Magallanes.
Thank you very much. Buenas noches, estimados miembros de la Mesa Directiva. Buenas noches a todos, papás, chicos. Soy Lourdes Martinez, mamá mexicana, inmigrante hace casi cuatro años. Y llegué a este país con dos hijos, Patricio de 15 años, Victoria de 13. El cambio de país para Patricio ha sido más que favorable. Aquí él vino a cristalizar sus anhelos personales, académicos y culturales. Se adaptó rápidamente y ha tomado lo mejor y lo más conveniente que el sistema educativo le ha brindado. Y su reclasificación fue casi inmediata. No fue la misma experiencia para mi hija Victoria. Llegó a una edad difícil, de una escuela más pequeña, muy pequeña en México, a una mucho más grande y de un ambiente muy diferente aquí Estados Unidos. Aun cuando siempre ha sido buen estudiante y su reclasificación fue rápida y favorable, comenzó a sentir que no pertenecía a ninguno de los diferentes grupos que hay en el sistema educativo. Y lógicamente comenzó a tener conductas rebeldes que eran potencialmente peligrosas para su propia identidad. Y en consecuencia, y sumada a otros chicos, perjudicial para el desarrollo sano de nuestra propia comunidad. Cuando sucedió eso, busqué ayuda en la escuela de mis hijos en Dos Pueblos High School y me encontré con el programa Parent Project, Proyecto para Padres, otra vez. Es de vital importancia que los padres de familia sintamos el apoyo comunitario a través de las escuelas de nuestros hijos, entre otras instituciones, para poder insertarnos rápidamente, empezar involucrarnos de manera eficiente y eficaz a través de cursos de entrenamiento como son Proyecto para Padres y Padres Adelante. El involucramiento de los padres me parece básico porque brinda las herramientas prácticas, concretas, para ayudar a nuestros chicos y a nosotros, los papás, a tomar buenas elecciones e integrarnos sanamente a nuestro hogar, nuestra escuela y nuestra comunidad. Para mí ha sido una gran herramienta que ahora puedo compartir y recomendar a otros papás que pasan por las mismas circunstancias que yo. Muchas gracias por su atención y por las acciones buenas que vienen en camino. Thank you.
Dear members of the school board, parents, children, good evening. I am Lourdes Martinez, a Mexican mother, immigrant for four years. I arrived in this country with two children, Patricio, 15, and Victoria, 13. For Patricio, moving to this country has been very favorable. Here, he came to crystallize his personal desires, both academic, personal and cultural. He adapted rapidly and he has been taking the best and most beneficial that the educational system has offered him. His reclasification was almost immediate. My daughter Victoria's experience was not the same. She arrived at a difficult age, from a small school in Mexico to a much bigger one, with a very different environment. Although she has always been a good student and her reclasification was quick and favorable, she started to feel that she did not fit in any of the different groups in the educational system. And consequently, she began to develop rebellious behaviors that were potentially dangerous for her own physical integrity and consequently, and added to the behaviors of other teenagers detrimental for the healthy development of our community. When that happened, I sought help at my children's school, Dos Pueblos High School, and I found the Parent Project program. It is of vital importance that parents feel our community's support through our children's schools, among other institutions. In order to integrate quickly, start getting involved in an efficient and effective manner through training courses and workshops such as Parent Project or Padres Adelante. I think parent involvement is crucial because it offers very practical and concrete tools to help our children and help us parents make good choices and integrate in our home, school and the community in a healthy way. For me, it has been a great tool that I can now share with and recommend to other parents that are going through circumstances similar to mine. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. This is Carmen Magallanes?
Yes, I am. Queridos miembros de la Mesa Directiva y miembros de la comunidad presente, buenas noches. Soy Carmen Magallanes Castillo. Soy vicepresidenta de Padres Unidos, presidente de ILLAC de La Colina Junior High, miembro de su comité de DILAC y madre de familia representando a La Colina Junior High en el comité de Padres para LCAP. Esta noche estoy aquí para agradecer infinitamente a cada uno de ustedes todo el tiempo, trabajo y dedicación para que quede terminado el LCAP. Agradezco el hecho de que hayan tomado en cuenta nuestra recomendación de nombrar un oficial para asistir en los servicios de los estudiantes-aprendices de inglés y que también estará coordinando y supervisando el involucramiento de los padres. Ya que como presidenta de ILLAC, que soy, es una de mis mayores preocupaciones, que aumente el número de padres involucrados en las escuelas. Y tenemos que estar seguros de que esto llegue a suceder. Nuestros directores en las escuelas están saturados de tantas cosas que tienen que realizar y no les queda tiempo para trabajar con los padres y qué hacer para involucrarlos en su escuela. Una vez más, mil gracias. Buenas noches, Carmen Magallanes Castillo.
Thank you.
Dear members of the school board and community members present, good evening. My name is Carmen Magallanes Castillo. I am the vicepresident of Padres Unidos, ILLAC president at La Colina Junior High, a member of the DILAC subcommittee and the mother representing La Colina Junior High at the Parent LCAP Committee. I am here tonight to thank you greatly to each one of you for all the time, work and dedication to complete the LCAP. I am grateful of the fact that you have considered our recommendation of appointing an official to coordinate services for English learners that will also coordinate and supervise parent involvement. Being an ILLAC president, it is one of my main concerns to increase the number of parents involved with the schools. And we have to make sure that this happens. Our school principals are swamped with so many things they have on their plate and they have no time to work with the parents to get them involved with their schools. Once again, thanks a million. Good evening, Carmen Magallanes Castillo.
Thank you.
That ends public comment, and I'll just make one comment. It's so nice to hear good things about our staff. It's very heartwarming. I appreciate it very much. And special ad, I think one lesson I learned from listening is taking the show on the road to where the parents are is probably a very good step in the right direction in lieu of having parents come to this location. So I heard that, I think, pretty loud and clear. And thank you, Mr. Torino, for sitting in as you did. Again, it's nice to hear good things about you. We always do, but that's still nice. Thank you. On the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 4-0 with one absent. And every motion we take tonight, there'll be one absent. We have no public hearing. Go on to F1, Action Agenda. Board action, student discipline, case number three cases. We'll take them individually.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative hearing panel recommendation to suspend the expulsion in case number 201314-28 and ask staff to include language that clarifies that community service completed does not count towards the graduation requirement.
And that is per stipulated agreement. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative hearing panel recommendation to suspend the expulsion in a stipulated agreement in case number 201314-30.
Just a correction, that's not a hearing panel recommendation. That's just purely stipulated agreement.
Just when I thought I had written it down, right?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 4-0.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to deny the administrative hearing panel recommendation and instead suspend the expulsion in case number 201314-31 and ask staff to provide additional information as soon as possible.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 4-0. Item F2, Board Action on Petition for Readmission of Expelled Students. There's two cases.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation to readmit a student in case number 201213-20.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, 4-0.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the readmission of expelled student in case number 201314-03.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 4-0. Dr. Cash, number F3, Approval of Grant of Easement and Approval of Pathway Construction for Tatum Property.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to have David Hetjung come forward. As board members are aware, we have a partnership with the county in relationship to a safe schools route with a grant that we received. And it required some additional work on behalf of both staffs. And Mr. Hetjung's here to let you know about that.
Just one comment before we get started. Just in general, each item on the agenda has an estimated time. And we're going to do our best to control to that time period if we possibly can. So as staff members give their reports and as public comments, if we can keep that in mind, and board if we can keep that in mind also. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, board members. Twice previously, you've had a chance to discuss and review this project. And we're now at the point where the county has received the grant. They have the money intact. The design is complete. Due to budgetary constraints, the pathway will not be lit. There just wasn't enough money in the budget to accomplish that. You see here the proposed pathway as it is in the bid documents. This area right here is where we are getting the easement from the owners of the property that houses San Marcos Growers. And as you remember, those board members, I believe most of you have walked this path. This was the kind of wet drainage area. And there'll be two places here where water can pass underneath the pathway and continue its natural flow of drainage. Also included on the agenda packet was an old lease that we did not have a copy of until we started on this project. We now have a copy of it. We had money coming in twice a year. It was just deposited and no one really paid too much of attention. But now that we have a copy of that lease, we will have an encroachment on their property. They currently have an encroachment on our property. And if and when this property is developed, I'm sure we can come to a mutual agreement with all the parties over some sort of lot-line adjustment that benefits both the district and the owners of the property. The county will not open bids until the 12th, two days from today. And if the project is within the budgetary constraints of the money available, the county will then award the project pending your approval tonight. There is a possibility that you could approve this project tonight and the project is over budget and it may not proceed. I just want to let you know that what we're doing is, tonight is asking you to approve the easement and then approve the project pending a successful responsive bid by the county on Thursday. Any public comment?
No.
Any comments from the board? Dr. Paz?
So that lease agreement is for the encroachment from San Marcos Growers?
Yes, this area right here.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I will move to approve the grant of the easement and approval of the pathway construction for the Tatum property.
I'll second it.
I guess I would amend it, assuming it comes within budget.
Correct. I believe that terminology was on the agenda item. So to me, that's understood.
It wasn't in the motion, though.
Okay.
I want to make sure it's in the motion.
I accept the amendment.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Hetjung. F4, for the discussion and approval of SBC SELPA, JPA, Board Representation Restructuring.
That's quite a mouthful. Easy for you to say, Mr. Heron. As board members will recall, there's been a requirement that each local school board only approve very specific items to the SELPA's Joint Powers Agreement. And one of those items has to do if the board determines restructuring its membership. And this restructuring of membership was done simply to accommodate the requests of the districts in the middle of our county. It has no real impact on us, won't make or break any issues that we have. And I have Helen Rodriguez here to answer any questions if any board members have them.
You're on that board, right?
Yes, I am.
Under what auspices are you on it? As a superintendent of our district?
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
Because it says there's nine superintendents and nine members.
That's correct.
All right. So I will approve the SBC SELPA JPA Board Representation Restructuring.
And what does JPA stand for?
Joint Powers Agreement.
Good. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, 4-0. F5, Approval of Open Alternative School Principal Position. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. Heron. It's with great pleasure that I bring forward to the school board tonight the opportunity to appoint a woman who has over 35 years of educational experience. I'm very pleased to present Colleen Millian for approval as a new principal of Open Alternative School. She has served students in our community as a teacher. She has served students in our community as a teacher, an administrator, and most recently as an affiliate faculty member and supervisor of student teachers at Antioch University. She's well-known in our community as an outstanding educator, an innovator, and someone that we believe will be a great fit at OAS and help OAS continue to improve and be the great school that it is. So, with that, would like to present her for approval.
You can give she stand.
Ms. Millian, will you stand?
Do I have a motion now that you've seen her?
I make the motion to approve Colleen Millian as the Open Alternative School Principal.
I agree.
I'll second that.
Under discussion, just one comment. During our discussion about OAS earlier this year, this board made a commitment to help the school in any way possible to increase its enrollment. So, I want you to know, you have this board's, and Dr. Cash's, and Mr. Handal, we will definitely want to work with you in any way possible to make it a success.
Well, I appreciate that very much.
Move up.
I want to thank you very much. I'm very excited, I'm thrilled, and it's wonderful to come back to my hometown. I was away for a little bit, and director up in the San Inez Valley, and I'm born and raised here, a native. And I've worked in Galita for years, and I'm passionate about progressive education. And I know in my conversation with Dr. Cash, he was very supportive of growing the school. And it is really my dream to build the enrollment and recruit from the Santa Barbara School District. So, I'm very excited to build the diversity and be an innovative school that will be very inviting for other families to want to come to. So, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the agenda.
Oh, we need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote? I thought we voted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four zero, and I'm sure if Kate was here, it'd be five zero. Thank you.
Mr. Heron, if you could indulge me a second, I would like to also say what's already been said. Want to thank Mr. Torino for his incredible service to OAS students and families this past five, six months now. He did not only the OAS interim principal position, but he continued to act as the Director of Pupil Services. He was not relieved of any job responsibilities here at the district office, he continued to do that spectacularly while really doing a great job at OAS, and I want to publicly acknowledge your hard work and thank you for that. Thank you.
We'll move to the conference agenda. Item G1, Discussion of Memorandum of Understanding between the Santa Barbara Unified School District and the What Is Love Project.
With that, I'll introduce Dr. Droti.
Thank you, government board. You know, in our discussions and preparation towards bullying prevention, we often do not talk about teen dating violence as bullying, as an aspect of that. So, our high school principals have recognized that as a need in our district, and have sought after programs that can support the education in stopping teen dating violence. And they have identified an organization called What Is Love. It's an organization that we have, you see the MOU that we want to partner with, and a lot of the work that we'll be doing is running assemblies, working with parents, working with staff, and basically training our staff how to support students through that kind of, that struggle. So, with that, I'll leave you open for questions.
Can we hear from Ms. Haynes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Dr. Cash, board members, thanks for bringing this to your discussion this evening. I have started What Is Love and have been doing this work for a little over 20 years, and have been volunteering on the campuses for violence prevention education for most of that time. And the thing that kept coming up over and over again with fighting and bullying situations on the school grounds was this idea of, our kids are having a real hard time understanding what can be healthy about love. Not only can they not identify it, but they're participating in behaviors that can escalate into quite serious behavior. So, this curriculum that I've developed, we've been implementing in the schools since 2010. We have some preliminary outcomes, an increase in awareness, an increase in crisis calls to our local domestic violence service solutions. We have counseling staff that has repeatedly asked for additional support with students that have identified as needing extra support and referral into the community for this What we're asking is to continue to do the work that we've been doing, and with this partnership, it will allow for securing funding and partnering with UCSB to train educators to help me to go into the schools and work with the students. Any questions?
What is the website address that people can get more information?
It's whatislove teens.org, and it gives an overview of the curriculum and what the services that we'll be providing, and then there's also some links to local community resources. My website, or my email address is on there as well, so if anybody wants more detailed information, you can contact me directly.
Questions? Dr. Paz?
My question is more to staff. When this starts, can we expect to have sort of a midterm report to see how we're doing, how the evaluation's going, that sort of thing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My question, which I warned you about earlier, is, in the MOU, almost every item is programming contingent upon available of funding. What was the other one? Evaluation partnership is contingent upon full funding, and there was a letter attached that that part of it might be as much as $20,000 for a couple of schools. Can you amplify on funding, what is needed, and what steps are being taken to get the funding to back this MOU?
Absolutely. We've already started the funding sort of plan with local organizations. What's contingent on this is the Santa Barbara Education Foundation has agreed to be our fiscal sponsorship once the MOU is in place. What that allows for is some greater partnerships with UCSB and the Bauer Foundation and the Santa Barbara Education Foundation I have already met with. They're leaders in their organizations, and they are very committed to partnering with us as long as we have a really clear understanding of what our relationship is with the district. We've already secured some funding from a private donor and from Verizon Foundation, so we're going to be looking outside of just our local foundations, corporations, business owners, to support this programming. The UCSB, Dr. Sharkey and Dr. Dunlap are also helping me secure some funding from federal and state programs. That also puts us into a really competitive process, but with all of these different partnerships in place, it really places us up at the top of the list.
And there is no cost to the district, which is the good news, right?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to show in the two-year pilot program that it's possible to bring this level of programming to the district with the support of our community's foundations and corporations and private parents, parents writing checks.
Any further questions from Ms. Leon?
So, I just have a comment. I'm glad that this is coming to our district in a more formal capacity, because as you said, some of this work has already been happening, and I think it's important to recognize that this has been a tough few weeks for education as a whole. We've had some very tough incidents happen, not just locally, but around the country, and I think more conversations, more exploration of what is healthy love, and the ability for students to have that outlet and also resources, I think is really important, and we can't underestimate the importance given some of the tragedies that have happened locally. So, I'm glad that this is happening. It's unfortunate that the timing, that these incidents happened as a whole, but I think it's important work that we do. So, thank you for continuing to work with our district. Thank you.
This will come back to us.
We'd like to have it on the consent agenda at the next board meeting.
Yes.
And I want to remind board members that our district has had a relationship with Ms. Haynes for two decades.
Close to two decades, yes.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of great work she has done in our schools, and I can attest to that when I was a high school principal, tremendous work. So, we're happy that she's back formally working with us, and look forward to a long partnership. So, thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. G2, Discussion to Reallocate Dispersing Officer Project Analysis from Range 11 to Range 18 on the Management Salary Schedule. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. Heron. I've asked Ms. Chite and Mr. Tedeschi to come forward and provide you with the rationale for this change.
Good evening. This is taking our current dispersing officer and moving her to an already internal auditor position. In March of 2012, the internal auditor left, and it was decided at that, that that position would be downgraded due to a level of work and the complexity of the job that was previously being performed. Now that our current dispersing officer, Lacy Preston, has completed one year, it is obvious that she is performing internal auditor job duties, not the dispersing office duties. Her workload has not only increased dramatically, but the level of work has also increased. Lacy is a certified public accountant and has been doing higher level duties than that of a dispersing officer. One example is the new financial system is much more complex, and she's doing all the internal control setups and ensure our system will pass our auditor's review. She also works with the auditor IRS, MA, Medi-Cal Review, reviews the settlements, and she is a hard worker, and she just does so much work for us. And I want to let Conrad talk a little bit about her role in the Munis financial system that we're implementing on July 1, and how valuable she is in that process.
As a CPA, she brings a skill set needed as we implement our new financial system, because we aren't just putting a new system in place, we're evaluating our internal controls, we're redesigning some of our procedures and processes, and how we do payroll, and how we do purchasing and accounts payable, and there's training in order to pass a CPA exam, and through experience in auditing, where you learn all the details of those internal controls that our auditors are going to want to make sure that we thought of all these things. And as an internal auditor position, it kind of raises the bar of the type of person, the type of skill set that we really need in that office on a day-to-day basis. We want it to be a professional-level person with that kind of skill set to be able to take anything that kind of comes her way. I mean, she works with the ASBs on their accounts to make sure that they're following all the rules and regulations, and the knowledge of working with the IRS, and all of those kind of higher-level business things that go on in the business office. I know, you know, the business office is often kind of pushed aside as a necessary evil here in the school district, but there's a lot of stuff that has to be handled, and it's not always pretty, and it's not always fun, and having a couple professional-level CPA-type of staff on hand really helps as our team, as we grow together here, to really kind of, you know, put our professional stamp on this business office. So, I think there's a lot of that kind of work being done now in that office. So, that's kind of, if you want to know more about the specifics of the Munis implementation, what she's doing is she's setting up roles for individuals, she's designing the workflow of how transactions will be approved and processed through the system. So, basically, she's helping me architect all of the controls within the system, because there's so many different ways to do it, and her knowledge that she brings as, you know, as a CPA of internal controls and the proper distribution of duties and things really has been awesome for me, and her help in getting all that stuff done. I mean, I could go into the, into the gory details of our accounting processes and procedures, but I'm sure people don't dare to see it. So, we'll take any questions, if you want any more details about the kind of things we're doing.
Monique, Ms. Leon?
It sounds like the person that's in the position is doing an incredibly great job, but my question is, the job description as it stands, is that a position that should this person not be around is absolutely needed to do the work that is happening? I just don't want, I'm trying to understand if this is just pending on an individual, or is this really the description of something that's going to support the department?
I don't see it as being just for the individual. I see this, it's an important position for this district, whoever's in that, in that job, as internal auditor with or for a district our size and the types of things that come through our office. It's not the individual, it's moving to that, that position to where it really should be.
I have one thing to add, too, that since we are physically accountable, we have to have either a dispersing officer or an internal controller. We had an internal controller, auditor, sorry, and that person was not a CPA, and so that's why we kind of downgraded it at first, because we thought, do we really need a CPA? Then we got Lacy in there, who is a CPA, and she just raised the bar. So, we felt that it was only right, hopefully that you guys will approve this, that we can move her to the position where she, where she really does deserve to be, and give her that level of respect also.
So, that's actually helpful, because I know we did have an internal auditor, and we did away with the position, and so the thought that it's coming back, I wanted some information on making sure that structurally this was right thing to do.
We didn't, we didn't delete the position, we didn't give it, we just set it aside till we found the right person to fill that position.
Thank you, this is helpful.
Dr. Paz, can I carry on on that question? You both have used the term internal auditor. There's nothing in this that even says internal auditor. In fact, in the job description, there's two sentences about the changes in this job description. Where in this does it talk about internal auditor?
That was produced by personnel, so I didn't, we looked for the job description for the internal auditor, and that, we couldn't get to it before this meeting, but the level is much higher, believe me. I don't, I don't know what to tell you.
Well, the way you're describing it is not the way it's on our agenda.
Our intent was to move the position from the dispersing officer back to the internal auditor, and what was provided in your packet was kind of a retooling of the dispersing officer position.
So, we should disregard this? And it'll come back next meeting in a different format?
Sure. Yeah, with the internal auditor job description, because I think that, that was the intent, to bring it as an, as an internal auditor, not the retooled dispersing officer.
Dr. Paz?
I had actually almost the same question, because the only part that I found that talked about the work that you're describing is, pretty near the first page, at the bottom, it says, "Work with staff to develop and implement corrective action for audit findings." And I was thinking, other than the red noted parts, how would that, you know, as you're describing it, how are we kicking it up several notches to meet the description that you have? And I don't feel like this description that we have in front of us really captures what you're describing.
So, I think when we bring it back, we should bring back the internal auditor job description that we have. And instead of retooling the dispersing officer and keeping it as a dispersing officer, we should bring it back as the internal auditor.
Because some of the things, and correct me if I'm wrong, a couple of things you mentioned were having to do with training or technical assistance for other staff members, and in here, it's not really described as such. And I'm really thinking, you know, the times where we have gotten our audit back, I look at, over the last two that I've seen, those opportunities for such a person as described by you all, to help some of our areas where we do need help, that follow-up from the audit that we do every year, because I think in certain cases, we have needed more training, more attention to those details that need to be done, and the person you're describing, the position you're describing, really would play into that role.
Yeah.
And Lacy is our go-to person for the ASB accounts and things like that.
Yes.
With the implementation of the Munis. With the implementation of the Munis, you know, she's doing that also on top of everything else.
Okay. So, I would...
So, most likely, it would just be part of the personal action form that you would see this.
Okay.
Since it's an existing position, the person's already enrolled, has already been hired, is doing the essential functions of the job.
So, are we getting back a new job description? That's where we're suggesting?
A new job description or we're just re...
The existing.
Yeah. We already have the job description in place.
Not the one that's in front of us is what I'm asking.
That's correct.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Limon?
So then, point of clarification, because my question was, is this job description needed to support the system? So, I think the answer I had was yes. So, who's going to do this job now? Is this, I mean, so now I'm confused.
It's an either-or.
It's an either-or.
Yes, we don't need a dispersing officer and an internal auditor.
All right. So, this job description was not, does not accurately reflect the position that you need, but they are interchangeable in some way?
So, that job description...
I mean, because am I going to see now in the new internal auditor position some of what was described here?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's already in that job description.
Absolutely. So, the internal auditor does those things and more to it, as far as the professional level and working, you know, on the audit and, you know, doing more of that kind of thing.
And as far as classification, are they equal-level classification? Is one considered a higher classification than others?
The internal auditor is higher.
Higher.
Based on the professional level and the need for it.
So then, I'm guessing the numbers attached to this job description are also going to change?
That's correct.
Pardon?
No, the numbers aren't correct.
No, the only thing that's going to change, here's what's going to happen, is that you're going to get the old or the current internal auditor job description, a position that we have, we've never done away with. And the recommendation on the personal action form will be, Lacy Preston is appointed the internal auditor, which is essentially what you've heard from staff tonight, is she is essentially doing the job duties of the internal auditor without being called the internal auditor because of the change that was made a couple of years ago to do away with the internal auditor and instead have a dispersing officer.
And there will be no change in the fiscal impact that's noted here?
The fiscal impact will be...
The same.
The same.
That's what's noted.
That's correct. That salary range you see there is correct for the internal auditor.
And by changing to the internal auditor position, does that mean that you have to post it and go out for a new candidate?
No.
No, okay. Okay. It'll come back to us as an action item?
Well, it'll be on the personal action form in the consent agenda, unless you want it separated out as a...
Well, since Ms. Parker's not here, do you think she might want to...
I think she makes the arrangements also a different job description.
Yeah, let's put it back on the action item.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item G3, Presentation of the Annual District English Learner Advisory Committee, which is DILAC, report.
We're very fortunate to have a number of people in the audience tonight that are going to come forward and make the presentation, but we'll start with our two DILAC chair presidents who will begin our presentation. And I think we have a PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Tedeschi?
Okay.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa de educación, administradores y personas presentes de la comunidad. Mi nombre es Gloria Hernandez y soy co-presidenta de DILAC, y mi compañera Maribel Canales también. Las dos juntas vamos a hacer la presentación. Antes que nada quisiera hacer, este, hablar un poquito acerca de los antecedentes. La razón porque es que nosotros tenemos como miembros de DILAC tenemos que hacer la presentación.
Members of the board, administrators, and public present, good evening. Before we start with the actual presentation, I would like to begin the presentation. Well, my name is Gloria Hernandez, and I am here with co-president Maribel Canales. And before we start with the presentation, I'd like to begin with the background.
Can you put the background up on the screen?
We don't have it. But I think you have it on your, in the copy of the...
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it is.
And it's on the agenda in both Spanish and English. Are you going to be giving us the Spanish version and then read it to us in English?
Yes.
Is this what you want?
Yes.
Okay, it says background, is that what you're going to start with?
Yes. Antecedentes para asegurar que los padres de los alumnos que están aprendiendo inglés y los miembros de la comunidad participan en el desarrollo, aplicación y evaluación de los programas del distrito para los alumnos que están aprendiendo inglés cumplan con los requisitos legales estatales y federales. El comité asesor del aprendizaje de inglés del distrito DILAC está a cargo de emitir un informe al consejo de educación escolar.
In order to ensure that parents of English learners, learner students, and community members take part in the development, implementation, and assessment of the programs and services provided by the district to EL students, and that the programs for EL students meet all state and federal legal requirements, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, or DILAC, must submit a report to the school board advising the board on the following topics.
Desarrollar un plan general de programa y servicios educativos para los alumnos que están aprendiendo inglés que tomen en consideración el plan segurar para el rendimiento de los alumnos.
Development of a district master plan for educational programs and services for English learners that takes into consideration the single plan for student achievement.
Llevar a cabo una evaluación de necesidades en todo el distrito basado en las escuelas individuales.
Conducting of a district-wide needs assessment on a school-by-school basis.
Establecer un programa, metas y objetivos del distrito para programas y servicios para los alumnos que están aprendiendo inglés.
Establishment of district programs, goals, and objectives for programs and services for English learners.
Desarrollar un plan para asegurar el cumplimiento de todos los requisitos aplicables a los maestros y ayudantes de maestros.
Development of a plan to ensure compliance with any applicable teacher and instructional aid requirements.
Administración de un censo anual de lenguaje.
Administration of the annual language census report.
Revision y comentarios sobre los procedimientos de reclasificación del distrito.
Review and comment on the school district's reclassification procedures.
Revision y comentarios sobre las notificaciones por escrito que se tienen que mandar a padres y tutores.
Review and comment on the written notifications required to be sent to parents and guardians.
Los miembros del comité asesor de aprendices de inglés del distrito han seguido sus esfuerzos en este año para aumentar el papel de los padres de alumnos que están aprendiendo inglés en el proceso de la toma de decisiones que afecta la educación de sus hijos.
The members of the DILAC have continued their effort this year to increase the role of parents of English learners in the decision-making process that affects the education of their children.
Ahora nos vamos a mover a los logros, los logros de este año.
Now, we are going to move into the achievements for this year.
Ha aumentado el nivel académico de los estudiantes. Ha sido reducido, pero los estudiantes que han sido reclasificados ha aumentado.
Academic achievement for English learners declined, but reclassified students excelled.
Ha aumentado las clases de liderazgo para los padres que tienen estudiantes-aprendices de inglés.
Increased leadership training for the parents of English learners.
Se han establecido ILACS en todos los sitios escolares, pero todavía nos hace falta un tipo de monitoreo para que sea cumplido con los requisitos.
ILACS have been established at each school site, but there is still a lack of a monitoring system for compliance.
El DILAC está trabajando... Perdón, pero estoy nerviosa. El DILAC está trabajando con los cumplimientos que se siguen por el estado.
DILAC is operating in compliance with state regulations.
Ha aumentado la efectividad de las operaciones del comité de DILAC en el distrito.
There's been an increase in the effectiveness of DILAC operations.
Muy abajo, no sé si alcanza a la... Increase percentage of RFEPs. Ha aumentado el número de, el porcentaje de alumnos que se han clasificado como fluentes en inglés.
The percentage of RFEPs has increased.
La tercera edición del manual de ILAC ha sido distribuida a todos los planteles escolares, y la nueva revisión del 2014-2015 se va a hacer próximamente.
The third edition of the ILAC manual has been made available to school sites, and we will need to revise this manual in 2014-2015.
Nuestra celebración de reconocimiento para todos los estudiantes-aprendices de inglés fue un gran éxito, y muchos de los miembros de aquí de la mesa de educación formaron parte de ello, y yo pienso que van a estar de acuerdo con eso.
The annual English learners' recognition ceremony was highly successful, and some of the board members present here came to this celebration, and I'm sure you'll agree that it was successful.
El programa de Justicia Restaurativa se ha extendido a más de seis escuelas, y como era, escuché ahorita en la agenda, me da gusto saber que más escuelas están tomando ventaja de este programa para traer a la, para traer de disciplina para los planteles.
The restorative approaches program was expanded to six schools, and from what I've heard at today's meeting, I'm glad to know that it will continue to be expanded to more schools to provide that approach to discipline.
Se han aumentado las oportunidades para padres participando en decisiones, en proceso de decisiones importantes, como puede ser también el ALCAP.
The opportunities for parents to participate in major decision-making processes has increased.
Ahora vamos a hablar de nuestras recomendaciones para este año. Las siguientes recomendaciones se basan en la evaluación realizada por el comité asesor de aprendices de inglés del distrito DILAC de los datos sobre el rendimiento académico de los estudiantes que están aprendiendo inglés durante el año escolar actual.
Now, we're going to move into our recommendations. The following recommendations are based on an assessment done by DILAC of relevant data on English learner academic achievement during the current school year.
Necesitamos tener un programa sistematizado para seguir provviendo los esfuerzos que hacen el comité de DILAC.
We need to systematize an improvement of our efforts, of the efforts of the DILAC committee.
También recomendamos que se cree un director que esté encargado para los servicios de los aprendices de inglés.
We also recommend that a position of director of English learner services be created.
Que los estándares comunes y el desarrollo de los estándares para los aprendices de inglés también sea, que todos los maestros acepten su nuevo rol y de una manera que enseñen para que todos los estudiantes aprendan de manera también individual.
The Common Core and English Language Development Standards call on all teachers to become facilitators of language and content learning for English learners.
Number four? Sorry. También se recomienda la implementación de las medidas en el plan de mejora para los programas de título 3 y título 1.
We also recommend to implement the district's Title III and Title I improvement plan.
También se recomienda que el distrito implemente un servicio en las escuelas para que se puedan monitorear a los... Perdón. Para que se pueda monitorear el progreso más de cerca y para que puedan usar los datos para ayudar de manera efectiva.
We also recommend to increase the effectiveness of English language development monitoring systems at the school sites.
Recomendamos también, que, recomendamos también de manera fuerte, que también haya algún protocolo para reclasificar a los estudiantes que están en primer grado y que cumplen con todos los requisitos para poder ser reclasificados.
We also strongly recommend that a reclassification protocol of eligible first graders be implemented or developed and implemented.
También recomendamos que el distrito provea de alguna manera soporte para los ILACS, porque hemos visto que a veces no cumplen con la ley de tener los ILACS en cada escuela, pero no cumplen con darle el soporte. No hay nadie que esté evaluando que se cumplan con las reglas, y eso es algo que afecta a nuestros estudiantes, a los padres también.
We also recommend that the district creates an evaluation metrics for ILAC compliance because we've noticed that oftentimes at the school districts, they do have established an ILAC committee, so they are in compliance, but the actual functions of the ILAC are not carried out properly, and that affects our students.
Recomendamos también que se provea suficiente entrenamiento para los maestros para que también puedan cumplir con las necesidades de nuestros estudiantes que están aprendiendo inglés.
We also recommend to provide adequate teacher training to meet learning needs of English learners.
Y recomendamos que las clases sean reducidas, perdón, reducidas, pero intensivas, para que sean más intensivas para nuestros estudiantes de inglés, desarrollo del inglés, perdón.
And we also recommend a reduction in the class size for intensive English language development classes.
Y también sugerimos que se continúe dando participación en decisiones grandes para los padres que somos, perdón, me incluyo, que somos líderes y que también nos permitan formar parte de tomar esas decisiones en beneficio de la educación de nuestros hijos.
We also recommend that the district continues to offer the parents of English learners meaningful participation in major decision-making processes because that will benefit our children.
Que también el distrito ofrezca entrenamiento para los padres que son líderes, para que participen también en el desarrollo de decisiones, y que también los padres tengan apoyo por parte del distrito en hacer decisiones.
We also recommend that the district offers the parents of English learners site-based leadership training.
Que también haya un sistema que pueda... Que el distrito provea una mejor condinación en el apoyo del acceso al lenguaje para los padres que hablen español en todo el distrito mediante un sistema centralizado para todo el distrito. Mediante un sistema centralizado para todo el distrito.
We recommend the creation of a centralized system To ensure district-wide language access for the parents of English learners. So it's coordinated at the district level.
Y ahora le voy a pasar la palabra a mi compañera Maribel para que siga con las recomendaciones.
And now the co-chair, my co-chair Maribel, will continue with their recommendations.
Buenas noches, Maribel Canales, co-presidente de ELAC. Y la número 13 de recomendación del ELAC es que... El número de alumnos de aprendices de inglés estén matriculados Y que completen con éxito los cursos avanzados de ciencia, tecnología y matemáticas, ingeniería.
Good evening, Maribel Canales, co-chair of the ELAC. Our recommendation number 13 is to increase English learners' participation and success In STEM courses to reflect the percentage of English learners in the district.
También se recomienda que el distrito aumente su apoyo a los programas educativos Para niños y niñas que estén aprendiendo inglés en la edad preescolar.
We also recommend an increase in district support for literacy And English language development programs aimed at preschool-age English learners.
Se recomienda que el distrito desarrolle un plan que satisfaga completamente las necesidades De aprendizajes a largo plazo, con metas anuales medibles Para la reducción de largo plazo.
We also recommend the development of a plan To reduce the number of long-term English learners to zero percent.
Que el distrito, por favor, establezca un comité de reclasificación más efectivo Que sea conformado por maestros de educación regular, maestros de educación especial y un administrador escolar.
We also recommend that please the district establishes a more effective reclassification committee And formed by teachers of special education, teachers of general education teachers...
Administradores.
And an administrator.
Que las escuelas se enfocen en un desarrollo de comités ejecutivos de ELAC. Perdón, formado por los padres líderes más eficientes de las escuelas.
That the schools develop an executive English learners advisory council Made up of the most experienced parents of English learners And knowledgeable site administrators.
En esa recomendación voy a agregar que se recomienda altamente Que los entrenamientos sean ofrecidos también a padres Y que haya entrenamientos para los administradores.
And within that recommendation, I'm also going to include that Trainings are provided to parents and also to administrators.
Que se recomienda que el plan singular para el rendimiento de los alumnos de cada escuela Sea traducido y disponible a todos los padres. Hemos experimentado que muchas escuelas no lo tienen.
We also recommend that single plans of every school Be translated and made available to all parent leaders at each school site Because we have noticed that many schools don't have their single plan translated.
Okay. La número 19, que para facilitar la comunicación entre padres, escuelas y el distrito de cada escuela Establezca un centro de comunicación de padres con computadoras conectadas al internet.
That in order to increase communication between the district, the schools, and parents Parent communication center be established with technical training for parents at each school site.
En la número 20, hay una gran necesidad de capacitación de tecnología para los padres Y se recomienda que se provea un taller continuo de tecnología para padres.
There is a big need for technology training for parents And we recommend that those technology training for parents Be focused on enhancing homeschool communication and educational uses.
Y la última, pero no la menos, que el distrito reenfuerce más de las colaboraciones con negocios de la comunidad Para proveer computadoras donadas y usadas para el buen estado... Pero en un buen estado para que los padres tienen computadoras en sus casas.
And last but not least, that the district strengthens partnerships with community businesses To increase donations of computers in good shape That families can use, those families that don't have a computer at home.
Muchas gracias y que también soñen con nuestras recomendaciones.
Thank you very much, and please also dream with our recommendations.
Solamente tenía una pregunta... ¿Tienen alguna pregunta que hacernos? O... You have any questions?
Yes, Simone.
Yes. So I'll say it in English first and then I'll say it in Spanish. My question is, you made a comment in your recommendations About needing more district support, that we were meeting the mandates of ELAC and DLEC But needing more support, can you be specific?
See, the reason why we ask that is because when we have our DLEC meetings We hear from different ELAC schools representatives that they say I'm trying to do, and I hear when I come to these meetings That you are getting the support, you are following an agenda, You know what legal parts you have to do. But on my school side, I don't get the support from the principal For the assistant or for the person that is going to help me out for our ELAC. So that's why we are suggesting that we get support In a way that, right now, we don't have a system As in our recommendation, we don't have a system who is checking That ELAC is not only, "Oh, okay, I have ELAC, okay, I check", But you are not making sure that they are following Certain topics that you had to cover so it functions, so it's legal. That's why we are asking for a support in that part.
Okay, great, thank you. And I guess my next question is really for the district. I'm just curious, I feel like I could be wrong, but this is the most recommendations I've seen In a DLEC report, very clear recommendations And I'm curious as far as thoughts and feedback on the response from the district On some of the, really, the 21 recommendations that have been made, not one by one, but just overall.
Excellent recommendations, and I'm certain we'll be working with our DLEC To, if not fulfill all of them, most all of them. Many of them are already in the ELCAP.
Great, well, and I want to thank the both of you. I think that this is work that is hard to do Because it requires that parents go above and beyond to commit time, to commit a lot of energy. And presenting in front of a school board is never easy. So I want to thank you, I think you did a great job, and I really, really appreciate the thoroughness. If I... I don't know if folks in the audience have had the chance to see how detailed this report is, The letters, the recommendations, the presentation, And I felt like I learned a lot by reading your recommendations. So I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, thank you.
Yeah, and last, I want to, but not least, I just want to thank the group that helped us Because it's Maribel and me that are doing the presentation, But it was a collaboration with Mike Bell. It was Jose Saleta doing the translation, barely on Monday last week. And Mr. Carmen, I think she already left, Carmen Magallanes.
Group of her...
Saul Guereña. I'm just so nervous, I'm forgetting names, but two old that helped us, really, really, really thank you.
It's just like the award ceremonies, right? Where you try to remember who to thank, no, I appreciate, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you everyone for being involved in this process.
Thank you for your time.
When was that? Dr. Paz?
Yeah, I had a quick question. So in the recommendations, I'm curious, I did not see... And I just want to know whether there was any discussion at any point in time Whether there was a recommendation or a discussion around having more parent trainings. Not on leadership, because I could see there's a lot of leadership pieces. But on parent training and how to help your children In any area that they may need help in. So that would be interesting to know.
Well, when I say parent training, it's because, as you know, most of our... We come from different backgrounds, where school is not something that we get involved into On a child education, so when you come here, you learn that it's different. So if you want to have success, or if you... First, you have to understand that here it's different from where you come from. So parents don't know, so you need to teach them. You need to let them know that it is important, it is really basic, That you are the support for your child education, so you need to get involved And they need to understand that. So how they're going to understand that, you need to give them support. You need to give them classes, so they understand, like Padres Adelante, like Pique, I can name many of them. So they start knowing, so if they don't know, they don't know that they need to do something. So we need the support from you, from the school district, to give money for those classes for parents So they are aware that there is something that they can do at home.
I just want to add something, and it's not to make like a leadership Or make parents their leaders at school, it's more being leader at home. Because we're coming from different cultures, different school system, So parents, they don't know how the school system is here. So actually, being facilitated in Padres Adelante classes, I can see that Many parents, they can get involved in committees As they start knowing the importance to be involved And how can they help the kids succeed in the school. So it's not just for make a leader at school, it's make leader at home too, and help the kids.
And that's really the question I was asking, because a lot of the pieces are... You know, there are always openings and opportunities for parents to be involved In their children's education at a school level. But when it comes to helping your children in terms of a specific area, Like I've spoken to a lot of parents, "I want to learn how to help my child with reading." "I want to help my child with math." And that's really what I'm asking about, is more of those specific areas, Whether you've had discussions, talked about it, those particular things, Because I didn't see it in your recommendations.
Okay.
We'll put it for next.
Yeah, maybe we'll add it, we'll add it.
I'm just curious, because there's a lot of pieces in here that ask for a lot of... A lot more increased opportunities for leadership, and I think that's... It's great. But I think when we've had the opportunity as individual school board members To have met with parents, and I hear from parents directly, I like to have an opportunity to learn more about my child's development. I like to know more about how I can help my child with the particular area of their work. I didn't see it, and that's why my question came up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
I would just like to comment, sort of what Ms. Simone and the others have said Is that this is a tremendous body of work, and I'd like to remind the people in the audience And the members of home, people at home who are watching this, That your 21 items that we went through is an overview, But if you go to the district website and look at the agenda, those 21 points are detailed. They are tremendous, more information that you included in the report.
Yes.
Plus, you made reference to the summary of Title III One Needs Assessment And the need for us, that improvement plan to work on. That itself is dramatically detailed as a background paper in the agenda. So if you go to the agenda, there's a lot more information that is relevant And the time and effort you spent in putting that all together is tremendous, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be gladly to just go over everything that you have, but it will take...
No, we have it. I'm urging people to go find it and read it, because it's far more than what you just went through. You did a great job summarizing, but I hope the staff...
And it was hard for us to summarize, because we want to say every little word.
I just hope the staff in this room reads the detail And those areas that they're involved in give deep thought to it. And we look forward to a great report next year and summaries during the year. Thank you very much.
Ms. Simone has a question.
Ms. Simone.
So I was debating at what point in the agenda I would bring this up, But because you did mention the summary of Title III and One Needs Assessment, There is something on there that is listed that is a problem for me. Fifty-two percent of our special education students are English language learners. What are we going to do to change that? Because English language learners are not automatically special needs students, And I cannot ignore that glaring statistic that was included there. So I don't know if anyone can comment, I don't want to put...
Oh, absolutely, we have... This is something we talk about every Monday in Cabinet, don't we? Members of Cabinet.
Say yes.
No, I mean...
So, and what are we doing? I mean, this is...
We are training, we are retraining all of our assessors, our speech and language, our psychologists. We are deeply involved in analyzing the data, in fact, I just got a whole bunch of data from Ms. Rodriguez today On our current students who are English learners, who have language objectives in their IEPs. It is a professional training issue of huge significance In relationship to not just assessing students, but providing teachers, classroom teachers With the tools to be able to teach second language learners more effectively As opposed to identifying them as special needs students. So we have engaged in a lot of work and we will continue to do so. We have to make a substantial reduction in that number. It is not appropriate.
Good, well, I'm glad that the district is doing something, and I definitely hope that we would get updates Because this is a big concern, I know it's been a concern in our district for some time. And the other piece I have a question about is long-term English language learners. Do we happen to know the numbers and percentages of long-term English language learners in our district?
Six hundred and seventy-two long-term English learners at this point, and we have roughly...
Six hundred and seventy-two, and can you tell me how many years they have been?
Five years or more.
Five or more years.
Yes.
So six hundred and seventy-two students that are English learners have been...
Out of five thousand.
Out of five thousand have been classified as that for five or more years.
They meet that criteria, yes, they do.
And so are we also engaging in professional development around that piece of it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right, well, I know that that's also an issue at the state level And there's been legislation around that and asking for us to track it. So I'm following these two things very closely as they are concerns for me.
I think those metrics that you talked about are going to be... Are going to be a part of what the ELCAP would focus in on. So on a yearly basis, you should be hearing our address on those issues.
Good, good, and I look forward to improvements too.
Dr. Paz.
Just a quick comment. So I look at that issue, and I was asked about that question by... By one of our news, local news agencies about that number. And I have to comment and say that that number concerns me, and it is not new Because you've spoken about it at one point in time, Mr. Handel. About a year, year and a half ago, we were looking at the numbers, and I was thinking about like, whoa, that's... Not surprising, but not good. And so I look at it as twofold, one, are we giving the appropriate services to those students? Which is a great response by Dr. Cash in terms of what we're trying to do. And the flip side of it is, are we not then giving the level of services We need to give to other special education students who may be rightly classified, not wrongly classified? And that's... There's two sides of that coin, and I feel like we need to begin to address that Because somewhere, we're either giving not enough services to a number of students Or too much of another, to another class of students. So I look at that and I go, wow, that's... It's a really complex issue in that sense of the word. And I think we really need to begin to understand it more in terms of its impact Not only on ELL students, but on special education students in general.
There's absolutely no doubt that we have a significant amount of work in this area that needs to be done. I would say the number one issue is changing the mindset of our educators, and we are working on that.
I do think it's great... I just think it's great to have it all in one set of documents. I think it really pinpoints for us the issue. And, we thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. For the discussion, we'll go to item G4, update on the re-designated fluent English proficient.
Well, as highlighted in both the D-LAC report and in the L cap, a significant amount of work that has been done this year is on reclassification. And, Mr. Handel's going to present the work that's been done. And, before he gets to it, I do want to just quickly remind everybody that this is an issue that is being faced by every single district in California because of the lack of a statewide assessment system. And, so, just about anything we come up with is going to be temporary in nature until we have a statewide assessment system. So, Mr. Handel.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. So, as Dr. Cash was saying, this, this update is specifically to focus on, on what's going on in the state. But, also what we're trying to do actively to address some of the needs we had before all the changes in the state and currently with all the changes that are hitting us. So, I, I wanted to first review some of our current reclassification criteria. Up there, you'll see, you know, the CST score for the secondary, you have to pass the KC. You'll see that students have to score in early advanced or advanced in their CELT overall and all their sub-scores, which is listening, speaking, reading and writing. Another part of reclassification is teacher input, which is based upon school performance. There, you see the criteria, criteria in both elementary and secondary. And, currently, it's basically a parent signature consultation. So, that's the basic criteria that you'll see outlined in a board policy and Administrative Reg 6174. Next, please. A quick history of the current RFEP criteria is that back in, I believe it's 2008, our, our students, our English learners, were performing very poorly on state assessments. As a matter of fact, you'll, you'll see that I noted that they were performing lower than our special ed students in language arts, which is significant. Because, you know, when we think of special ed students, we think of cognitive challenges. And, when I think of English learners, I don't think of cognitive challenges. Also, there was a longitudinal study done by our evaluator at the time, Dr. Hayden, Davis Hayden, as well as Dr. Cynthia White. They found that, that there was a certain cutoff. They, they wanted to see where our English learners had to score in terms of their CST to do well throughout the rest of their educational experience through the high school. They also looked at Title III compliance. And, I believe they, they engaged in authentic effort to support our English learner students. But, at the time, they looked, they, they didn't look at our system of support for English learners as one that was supportive. It was a kind of a Darwinistic approach to our English learners. Once they were re-designated or reclassified, they were sent off into a general ed setting with no support. Where, we hope that's not the case anymore. We're still trying to build up that support. But, the changes that they made at the time were based upon a minimally supportive system for our English learners. So, when they made their decisions to, to revise the criteria, it was based upon what they felt was in the best interest of our English learners. Next, please. So, the rationale for, for the changes that we're proposing with the committee are, one is the extraordinary barrier to academic access and success for English learner students. We do have a criteria, but we also know that, that our students have not been re-designated at the rate that we feel is appropriate. And, we also realize that our English learner students, as long as they continue to be English learners, that they don't gain access to the A through G requirement classrooms. So, essentially, they are, they, they gain no access to the universities if they continue to be designated as English learner students. We also had problems in terms of clarity for the RFEP process in the elementary school. There was some confusion. I know as a principal, I engaged in a certain practice that was different from other principals in the district. And, so, we, we wanted to make sure we had some clarity throughout all of our district. There is also changes, as I think everyone knows, in Common Core and the Next Generation Science Standards. And, there are changes also in the California ELD, ELD, English Language Development and English Language Arts Framework, which was recently released. So, our district actions is we've assembled a team of teachers, site administrators, parents and district administrators, myself and Dr. Drati for some time. And, we reviewed some of the following documents. You know, first, we went over the board policy and that should be AR, Administrative Reg 6174. And, we reviewed the RFEP criteria.
Can you let us know what RFEP means?
Redesignated, red designated fluent English proficient. Those are students that get re-designated from their English learner initial designation. We looked at the reclassification rates countywide, compared our district to the other districts in the county. We also reviewed the applicable laws and regulations that governed the reclassification or re-designation of students. We also studied the updated CDE guidelines for reclassification of English learners that can be found in the 2013-14 CELT Information Guide, which really helped us a lot. Next slide. So, the team realized that there were only four mandated criteria, which include teacher evaluation, performance on a basic skills test that we have been using. We currently use the CST. And, we also have to look at the performance of students on English language proficiency assessments, which you guys know, we, we use the CELT. The, the information we received were, that we read, that there had to be an overall score of early advanced or higher. But, there also could be, on the sub-scores, it could be intermediate or higher on the sub-tests, which is slightly lower than our, our current criteria. As well, we needed a parent opinion and consultation. Additionally, we learned a little something about early identification or reclassification of students. We learned that students in the first grade may be reclassified when scoring at early advanced or advanced on the CELT assessment. They also must have a teacher evaluation or academic performance that indicates they're on par with their English-only classmates. And, as well as parent consultation, opinion and performance on other locally available assessment, which we will discuss in, in a second. We also learned that English learners that do have an IEP had a use of four mandated criteria in the guidelines that we found from CDE was that English language proficiency and basic skills ability equivalent to an English proficient peer with similar abilities. Which is to say, we, if we could get a baseline of students with particular disabilities, look at their language proficiency and establish that as a baseline to compare our English learner students, we could devise a criteria or a baseline in order to reclassify our students with disabilities, which is pretty exciting. Because, we, we've never even broached that particular area of, of reclassification for our students with IEPs. Currently, the, the team's recommendations include the following, which is, as I stated earlier, create an interim RFEP criteria of teacher evaluation based upon student performance, parent consultation, opinion, current CELT or California English Language Development performance requirements. We are proposing, or the team is proposing, the utilization of the Scholastic Reading Inventory in lieu of smarter balanced, smarter balanced assessments until the proficiency bands are established for performance in smarter balance. In CSTs, we had the, the, the bands of advanced, proficient, basic, below basics and what have you. We haven't had those bands created yet. So, until we, until those bands are established, we would propose that we utilize the SRI, the Scholastic Reading Inventory in lieu of that. We also want to expand eligibility for RFEP to first grade through 12th grade. As you heard tonight, and we've heard in some communications, we, we do have students out there that come to us that meet the criteria to be re-designated in first grade, which I, I don't think we should hold our students back. And, neither does the team. So, we would propose expanding eligibility for reclassification to first grade. We also propose to establish a baseline of English language proficiency and basic skills for students, for students with IEPs and apply that accordingly. Finally, our, our next steps are to establish a grade level Scholastic Reading Inventory scores for grades first through 12th with a Scholastic representative and the RFEP team. We also would like to present a proposed RFEP criteria to the principal leadership team and the District English Language Advisory Committee, also known as the D-LAC for input. We also, we would have to present the revised criteria to, to you all as a conference item. Then, we'd have to revise the BP and AR as recommended. And, we would also revise any input or make any revisions according to the input we receive back to you, from you. And, then, we would apply the new criteria for the next academic year. I, I do want to make a quick note of the SRI scores. Just for clarification, the SRI scores are just like, they're like many other assessments. They have performance bands that have been normed by, I think, half a million students. So, we have a pretty firm range of where students must score in order to be at grade level according to the reading inventory. So, we would propose that and give you more information about that when we bring the criteria forward to you for more discussion and input. And, with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Ms. Lamone.
So, the, are other districts also using the Scholastic Reading Inventory in, in the meantime and not using the Smarter Balance? Or, is this just something that we're trying out? Or?
Well, I'll first say there is no Smarter Balance. I mean, we, we have no individual scores now. And, the soonest we would get them would be, even if they have them, would be a year from now.
So, this is just until we get Smarter Balance? Results course?
Yeah. Yeah. We, we want to reclassify students now. And, if we wait until Smarter Balance, we wouldn't reclassify any until a year from now.
So, are, how are other districts reclassifying now? I'm just curious.
They're all creating in, locally determined assessments. I mean, everybody's doing the same thing right now, trying to figure out what they're going to do.
And, are other districts using the same method we are?
It is my understanding, like Dr. Cash said, that they are using assessments like the SRI. There are other assessments out there, but this assessment, we feel, has been normed with enough students that we feel comfortable utilizing it versus some other assessment that has not been normed to a large enough group of students for us.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Paz.
So, one of my questions is to do with how are we going to look at this group of students and see how they do as they progress, especially as it relates to the ones in the lower grades? And, comparing those students to whenever we get to that point in time where we have something that's a little more standardized across the state. And, looking at, you know, how do these students, students do compared to those students? And, how can we, I guess more than anything, make sure that we're, we're on track, we're doing the right things? And, that we have some, some level of confidence that we're, as we move forward, that we in fact did the right things at this point in time without knowing all. I, I understand not, not knowing all the other pieces.
Right. So, two things. One is obviously, we're going to have to put an evaluation criteria in place and be able to bring that information back to you to, to indicate, you know, these are our FEPs and how they're doing. Typically, what happens is you see RFEP students, students have been re-designated, actually outperform native English speakers across the state. They actually score higher in, in language arts statewide and within our district. But, in particular, what we'll do is we have to monitor even two years after, for two years, we have to monitor their progress. After those two years of, after reclassification, they will be treated like any other student, English-only student. So, if they slip back and they have some literacy challenges, we provide them the same literacy support that we would provide a, a native English speaker. So, the support would continue. But, we're going to constantly be looking at our reclassification criteria to ensure that students are being successful. And, we're not letting them out of the barn too soon. Because, we don't want to set them up for failure. And, if we see that our students are having challenges at a, you know, at a rate that we don't feel is appropriate, then we'll revise accordingly. But, right now, this is something I feel we need to do because there is no assessment to utilize. And, there is no criteria. Well, there is a criteria. But, we would lose a whole year of being able, or two, to re-designate our students. Yes, sir?
So, I, second question was to do with the previous item. One of the things we were discussing, obviously, is looking at the number of EL students who are classified as special education. And, one of the things rightly that Dr. Cash pointed out is there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done with training administrators, teachers in terms of looking at this as an issue. So, is that something part of what the proposal is as far as next steps are concerned? I don't necessarily see it completely. But, if you can comment on that, would be great.
Certainly. So, one of the things we always want to do is improve our instruction. And, you're going to see in our L cap that we're going to put in a lot of resources into improving instruction and professional learning. And, that's going to be all part of our improvement as a district instructionally. We're going to focus on, on English learners and English language development and the support that needs to be provided to our students. But, also, we, we believe with a, with a appropriately and comprehensively created English learner master plan, which we currently don't have, we feel that we will put in place or set something in motion, an effort in motion that will begin to meet the needs of our English learners. We currently don't have a comprehensive English learner master plan, which is something we've been hoping to get to over the last couple of years. But, with all of the, the things going on in, in education right now, it's been incredibly challenging.
Ms. Edelson.
I had two questions. At a State of the Schools presentation last year, there was speakers who were concerned with the English learner language designation coming, if they just checked the box that they were Spanish-speaking in their home, that put them, put into motion that this was their designation. And, then, they were trapped. Or, that's what they spoke to. And, I'm wondering if that is different now? Or, is that still the case? And, or was that misinformation? And, then, a second, there was also a sense that there was a conspiracy that the district had funding based on the English learning students. And, therefore, there was a motivation to keep these kids classified as this. So, I just want to open that, those questions up.
Well, I'll speak to the latter. The premise is correct as far as we, that all districts get funding for English learner students. But, the, the idea that we would intentionally mislabel students based upon their abilities is false.
And, as far as the process of identifying English learners, that has been tricky throughout the state. Because, the state has been very clear-cut in, in the language survey that they do, that we do. All, all school districts are mandated to apply to every incoming student to ask that basic question, which is, is there another language spoken at home used to identify potential English learners? I think as a district, we could perhaps put more emphasis into making sure that, that families are clear when they're, when they're answering that survey. Because, we do have some research that shows that 75% of native English-speaking students, when taking the current version of the California English Language Development Test, also are eligible for English learner status, which is, you know, is scary. So, what happens is many parents come in and they, you know, they have a parent that speaks the native language that's not English. And, for reasons of, you know, whatever it is, they mark it down as, yeah, there's another language. And, the student gets assessed. And, sure enough, they come up and qualify as English learner. It's very difficult, once we put them in the system, to change that designation. It's very challenging. It's very challenging, but it's something we hope we can work with the state with to perhaps build a better protocol so that we don't have so many misidentified students. But also, I also want to point out that if we do include a first-grade criteria and we see students are performing at their peers' level, their native English classmates' level, that it'll be really easy to redesignate them in that case.
Thank you.
You indicated that for the two years after they reclassified, we have to monitor them, I think you used. And you said also, though previously, we failed because we didn't support them once they reclassified. I presume your word "monitor" also means support for those two years.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to G5.
Oh, excuse me. G5, the VAPA Plan.
We have three public comments on G5.
Let's have it introduced as a topic and then we'll ask for a public comment.
Well, when I first got back to Santa Barbara, I engaged a group of stakeholders to develop a Visual and Performing Arts strategic plan after meeting with all of the secondary's Visual and Performing Arts teachers. And that plan draft came to fruition, and it's before you in a draft format. It took a while to get here and it still is in a draft format because we have some issues with logistics in relationship to some of the actions and goals. And we have both Mr. Handel and Dr. Drody ready to present it.
Thank you again, Dr. Cash. So in the plan, instead of going through every single item, I see it's a 10-minute item, so we have three focus areas in the plan that you'll notice. One is standards-based and culturally relevant Visual and Performing Arts curriculum by highly-qualified teachers. We also have equitable access to standards-based and sequential Visual and Performing Arts instruction. And the last area of focus was sustainable resources to support a program into the future, and the hope was to perhaps have enough general funding to pay for the program. For the elementary, we've had such great partners in the community, such as ICAN and the parcel tax. I include the entire community for the generous donation and voting to provide our students with an elementary music program. So in the elementary, we do have music, as I mentioned, and many of our schools do have a high-quality art program, mostly because of the generosity of the ICAN partners that we have. I know a couple other schools, Roosevelt and Washington are working on programs right now, but I know that we, as an elementary district, our, excuse me, our elementary schools are meeting the criteria outlined in the plan. Dr. Drody will speak to the challenges that we're facing once that plan articulates into the secondary, because that's where we run into a few challenges. Dr. Drody?
Thank you, Ms. Handel. Yes, there is a challenge in the secondary starting in the seventh grade, primarily because of the master schedule. If you look at goal, if you look at focus area two, equitable access to standards-based and sequential VAPA instruction for all students. In those goals, the idea is for all students to have access to visual performing arts. In our secondary schools, we basically have six periods in a day. And that's where, in those six periods, four of those periods are consumed with science, social science, mathematics, English language arts, and PE, which leaves one area. So there are those students that are on grade level that are able to take a VAPA course, performing arts course. But we also have students that need support that are either in double English and soon to be double math to support and to be successful in those courses, to make them eligible for A through G. So our issue is a real challenge. If we have an eight-period day, it wouldn't be a challenge, but we don't. So I think this is where the VAPA committee stopped at that point, and so we're still in the process of trying to figure out what we can do to resolve that.
Do you want to go to public comment now? We'll go to public comment.
Okay, and these, there's three, so I'll line them up. Leah Valquez?
Louis Velasquez, actually, unfortunately, he had to take off, so.
Okay, sorry for the mispron, Jeffrey Walker with ICAN.
I refer to Mr. Freeman.
Okay. Okay. Paul Freeman, first.
Now that you're all being properly greeted, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and administration, I'm Paul Freeman. I'm a parent of a performing arts student at Galita Valley. I'm also a graduate of Lachalina and Sam Arcus's Performing Arts Programs in the '70s and '80s. I'm president of Santa Barbara Children's Chorus, and I'm representative of a group of 24 leaders of arts organizations, foundations, and others who care about arts in the community. Thank you for providing our group, the Santa Barbara County Alliance for Arts Education, with an opportunity to continue our dialogue with you around the district's plan of making visual and performing arts available to all students, and it's a great plan. This goal, this is a goal that we support and know will have direct positive impact on our children, your students. As you may recall from our last presentation, we suggested that the district, that a district-based VAPA coordinator be critical to the success of this initiative, and we requested that this resource be added to the LCAP plan. And if you look at the strategic plan on the first page there, you'll see that a VAPA coordinator is on the plan as well. We're here tonight to offer more information on how we, as a group, propose to assist with this request. We know that this resource is not currently in the plan, and we know that funding, I'm talking about the LCAP plan, by the way. We know that funding is a main consideration for moving forward with any new staff or program. And we're prepared tonight to offer two options that would provide financial support over the next three to five years to help the district fund a VAPA coordination resource in the LCAP. And both of these options, which are outlined in the document which will leave you, we are proposing to provide funding for 90% of the cost of this resource in year one, with a sliding scale of decreasing financial commitment over a three-to-five-year period, a timeframe and a sliding scale, which we would want to discuss with you, and would be up to you to make something that would work. Co-funding models like this have been used with PTAs and PTOs in the district for school-based arts coordinators. There are already things in the LCAP that show funding coming from things like parcel taxes and other funds that will be partially funded, so there is a precedent for this. In addition, we're also going to provide a job description based on other districts who have successfully hired this kind of resource, which we hope will help you with your visualization of what this person could and should do. Tonight, we would like to request a meeting to be held in the coming week with district administration and any interested members of the board to work out the details with the goal of ensuring-
Thirty seconds.
Yes, that this resource be added to the LCAP documents. Margie Yavi from the Santa Barbara Education Fund has offered to help coordinate, and we, as members, have already have folks stepping up to help fundraise for this resource. With your commitment to execute, to move this forward, and our support with funding and other resources that we can provide as a group, we believe we can give the district's students the kind of arts experience that they want and need. Thank you for your consideration and support. We look forward to your request for a meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have Jeffrey Walker, please.
Yes, good evening, members of the board, administration, and the remaining members of the public. My name is Jeffrey Walker, and it's my privilege to serve as executive director of ICAN, the Incredible Children's Art Network. Believe it or not, next year will mark ICAN's 10th anniversary of providing high-quality arts programs to the children of Santa Barbara least likely to receive them. Through sustained creative learning opportunities that emphasize both artistic excellence and access, ICAN seeks to effect positive social change in the schools and neighborhood communities where we serve. This year, there will be plenty to celebrate. Just this week, we began our first-ever summer programming at our new building just two blocks from here at 222 East Cannon Perdido. In August, we will return to providing our outstanding in-school visual arts instruction to over 3,000 elementary school students at Adams, Cleveland, Franklin, Harding, McKinley, and Monroe. We'll also resume our intensive after-school music program at Franklin, where 120 students receive music instruction and academic tutoring for three hours every day, five days a week. I want to mention here that ICAN is selected to be one of nine national sites for an assessment, a three-year assessment by the Longi Bard School of Music at Bard College in upstate New York and Wolf Brown Associates in Boston, a distinction of which we're very proud. Tonight, I want to confirm that it is our intention to add three new sites to our citywide programs. We're very pleased to be able to return to Adelante Charter School with our visual arts program where ICAN first began in 2005. And we will also be expanding to the Santa Barbara Community Academy, bringing high-quality visual arts instruction to the children there. I'm also delighted to announce that we will be reaching students from Adams, Harding, and McKinley with a dramatic expansion of our music program after school, this time in partnership with the City of Santa Barbara. Look for ICAN Music this fall on the beautiful campus of the Westside Neighborhood Community Center on West Victoria Street. It's a whole new collaboration and one that we're certain will have a very positive impact on the community. We invite you to celebrate all of this news and more with us in 2014, 2015. There are two more essential facts about ICAN that I'd like to affirm tonight. Our commitment to the children of our communities is solid and long-term, and, 30 seconds, that that commitment is very significant no matter how it's measured. But I do want to emphasize and be clear to all who may not know that ICAN provides everything to Santa Barbara Unified School District at no cost. The value that we bring is free to every student that we serve, and that includes all instructional staffing, classroom materials, even the tables and chairs. In 2014, 2015, ICAN is honored to provide over $1.5 million in direct resources to supplement the district's commitment to visual and performing arts.
Can I have permission for 30 more seconds?
You may.
Thank you very much. Tonight, ICAN stands with the Santa Barbara County Alliance for Arts Education in supporting the proposal for a visual and performing arts coordinator position in the district. We believe that this new position will be instrumental, no, essential, in providing implementation of better arts in-school curricula, as well as managing and monitoring arts enrichment activities for students of all ages. ICAN's working relationship with the district is built on shared values and LCAP goals, and we urge you to adopt this proposal as we continue to work together. ICAN is investing in all arts for all of our children. Now is a wonderful time for the district to demonstrate its commitment to the same goals. Something else to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Limone?
Well, that was news to celebrate. I didn't know about the music program expanding, so I'm very excited and thankful to ICAN for everything that ICAN has done for our students. And I think it's interesting, tonight we've actually heard about some of our most underserved students and the lack of opportunities they have. And by thinking about what's happening in the elementary schools, I feel good that they're getting these opportunities after school in their classrooms, whether they're English language learners, special education students. And so I think we still have the dilemma of our secondary schools and how we're going to allow students to do more besides the intervention ELA or English Language Arts and the math. I actually, as a board member, would be happy to be part of this conversation. I want to, you know, give kudos to the district because they are allowing us to use a space to conduct two focus groups that will be talking to Latino families about the arts in our community. And so I think that that's great. And I, this, this proposal absolutely is, I think merits some serious consideration and conversation. But I do know that however the district moves forward with this proposal, we still have some complicated issues about how we reach our students who we know are not getting any form of the greater arts. But I definitely am supportive of this. I'm thankful, very thankful, that we can count on, you know, over 24 individuals and organizations that represent a true partnership, and I would like to see further conversations about this. And I think that the plan, by the way, was excellent. I know that the board was asking for the plan over and over, and so I know that you folks pulled together to put something together. But I do appreciate the committee, and I know board member Heron is on that committee, and I think it's great, and it gives us a starting point, and I appreciate both recognizing what's happening, the direction we're going, but also the recognition for some, the recognition for some of the challenges that we have ahead of us.
I would just like to say, Anna is not here, but Anna Pilhofer led this entire effort over a couple of years and basically put this plan together. And Anna was wonderful on this. Now she's a wonderful part of ICAN, so she went from this project to ICAN, which is fantastic. I would like, let me see, any other, any comments, Dr.?
Go ahead.
Do you have something? I'd just like to point out the next to the last page, just, it sounds simple, but I'd like to point it out. Yeah, next to the last page, under 2.0, the top, under item number two. Create a plan for VAPA sustainability once parcel tax dollars have expired. Every year, attempt to add parcel tax-supported VAPA FTEs to the district's general fund. I did notice on the LCAP, there is a music FTE in the, in the plan, which I think is a great step. But this is a major item. I mean, we, we need to plan for three years out to make this happen, so this is a major part of this plan. I don't want to get in a, personally, I don't want to get in a situation where we say, we do all these things, and three years from now, say, oh, sorry, no more parcel tax money, therefore, no more VAPA. This has got to be included in our budgetary process over the next three or four years. I know Dr. Cash says he's working on it, so I'm pretty sure it's going to be done. But I look at, you know, I look at the LCAP and, you know, there's a lot of, number one, a lot of money being spent, and number two, a lot of sort of blank spaces when it comes to the arts in that section of the LCAP. So over the next couple of years, we're going to have to be focusing on this, I think, quite heavily.
Yeah, I would firmly commit to the district's purpose in ensuring that visual and performing arts are never seen as something extra for students, but are seen as an integral part of every child's experience in our schools. And that means it can't be subject to a vote of, a willingness to voters to tax themselves more. It needs to be part of what we do each and every day. And I am more than happy to meet with whomever you guys want me to talk to, I bet Paul's one of them, and develop some sort of strategy. I have two logistical issues in relationship to that. One, I don't think it needs to be part of the LCAP hiring, creating a VAPA coordinator and, you know, having a job description approved by the board and going through that process. I think it would be nice if, a year from now, I mean, I would expect that if it's a successful position and there, you know, we have some work to do to determine that, I believe it will be, but I want to make sure it is, then it could be part of the LCAP moving forward. And I really want to make sure that we, as we go forward, that we develop in our own mind at least a very clear understanding of what we expect to learn from the position. I mean, you know, what metrics are we going to use to evaluate, just the same stuff we're going to do with the EL director? How are we going to, I mean, and the nice thing that you got tonight was the DILAC recommendations, which are, which will quite frankly be kind of the marching orders for the new director of the English Learner Services. These are the things we expect you to work on and report back to the board will be the great metric on how effective that position has been in accomplishing those. But I'd want to work with, I could work with this group or, and our own staff to kind of understand and then present to the board very clearly, this is what we would expect this position to do, and here's how we would measure it. And I can say that both Dr. Drody and I are very familiar with a visual and performing arts coordinator. with a visual and performing arts coordinator. Our former district, Clovis Unified School District, has had a visual and performing arts administrator for many, many years. And so we have really good kind of personal experiences with its effectiveness. But I want to, I'd want to make sure that we outline very clearly what we'd expect it to do and how we'd measure the effectiveness. And I think we can do that.
Question.
Ms. Idelson?
How impossible would it be to look at a seventh period in a junior high setting?
Well, for every student, we're talking about millions of dollars.
Okay, because I know that's the way we used to be.
Correct, right. And we've analyzed that, looked at it really clearly, and that if the board's direction is to create a seven-period day at the junior high, I think that's something that we can look at trying to get to over the next several years. But it's, it's more than $2 million. I think it's more than $2.5 million. It might be around three. But it's, so, I mean...
Because what the scenario I remember was you had a course that change, could change. So you could have like a wood shop, you could have a arts, you, you're right, a wheel of courses that offered students a variety of opportunities to do art and...
Well, when I was a junior high principal, we had a coral, a vocal music teacher and an instrumental music teacher and two art teachers, a wood shop teacher and an industrial technology teacher all at Greta Valley Junior High School with the same number of students that are there now. So when the seventh-period day was eliminated, unfortunately, those programs were eliminated or reduced significantly. That's why, to be very frank, when I got here, one of the most important things that I think we got going was this strategic plan, because I think it's, from my perspective, visual and performing arts are the soul of every community. It's that integral to a community's sustaining life, is having that. And while we have lots of areas we can improve in, I think we have some cultural issues in our visual and performing arts that we need to address significantly, and this plan does do that. I, I think we were, we were remiss in reducing those opportunities for kids. So I know that we have some junior high principals working with Dr. Droudi that are trying to be as creative as possible and bringing back as many additional opportunities for kids, and we'll continue to do that. But that's not the systemic solution that Mr. Herron is talking about. We, we got some work to do to, to plan for that, so. So I will take you up, Ms. Lamone. I will call on you, and I'm certain it will be probably these four people right here that we'll meet with, and we'll schedule some time within the next week or so, depending on your schedule.
Who will look at the plan focused on that seven, eight problem?
Dr. Droudi is working on that right now with his principals. But if we do create a visual and performing arts coordinator, that clearly will be part of their duties, will be to determine how best to meet the junior high student needs.
But is, what are we going to do with this? This is on conference agenda, it's a plan. What are we going to do to focus on it and get it back to be adopted?
I don't think we can get it back to you at the next board meeting.
No, I didn't think so.
I think we're months away.
Yeah, but...
But, I mean, you know, the initial thinking on it, quite frankly, is how can we utilize all of our visual and performing arts community partners, which we have? We have not coordinated their efforts in a way that could ensure that the goals in the plan are met. And from my perspective, the VAPA coordinator would be the position that could ensure that that coordination occurs. What we don't want to have happen is what unfortunately we've had happen in other areas, and that is, I know you and you're, you work for the Santa Barbara Youth Symphony, and so you're going to come to my classes, but you're not going to go to Ms. Idelson's classes because you don't have a relationship with her. And that's simply not enough, that's not okay. Everyone's not in their head, that's, we're not going to do that. So we need somebody that, that if I have a relationship with the youth symphony, that we will work out a relationship that ensures that all the students in my class, Ms. Idelson's class, Dr. Paz's class, Ms. Lamone's class, have that same experience. So it's not personality-dependent, it's really a function of coordinating the, the resources in the community. So I, I want to personally acknowledge and thank the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance.
Santa Barbara, yes, Alliance for Arts Education.
Okay.
It's a long one.
For, for committing themselves and funding to move us in this direction, so.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I do hope we get that back to us at some point with that either issue either taken out of it or refined or changed, but...
It will.
The rest of the plan needs to come forward. Discussion of the second, G6. Does anybody want to take a five minutes break or push through for the next hour?
Five minutes.
And the last item on the agenda is the discussion of second draft of the Local Control Accountability Plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to remind board members that the Local Control Accountability Plan comes to every school district in California as a result of the change in the funding formula, the local control funding formula. That the board has had an opportunity to see the first draft. As board members are aware, we have had a Local Control Accountability Plan Committee in place that's reviewed dozens, maybe hundreds of individual comments and comments from groups, including all of the presentations that have been made during public meetings here in front of the school board. And what, and the, I think Dr. Droudi would agree that the LCAP committee took all of those comments into consideration as they revised Draft 1 and prepared Draft 2. You'll note that in Draft 2, the changes are in red. There are cross-outs for things that were eliminated from Draft 1, and the new language is in Draft 2. And we have, Dr. Droudi is going to make the presentation because he was the chair of the LCAP committee.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. You have, you had a pretty massive document, so to go through it is going to be tough. So what we did was develop a PowerPoint that actually outlined all the recommendations that we did consider. And underneath it, I described what page it's in. So maybe if we follow the PowerPoint, and I'll have you ask a question about each specific recommendation. And if you want to go to the, go to the actual action or goal, we can go there. So, Mr. Tadashi, if you can, maybe go to slide number three. You'll see there, the first recommendation we put there was hire a Director of English Learner Services. And this person will be involved with also parent engagement as well. And it's on, so you would, you will find that recommend, you will find that information on page 19. Goal 3, Action 1. So I'll stop there and see if you guys have any questions regarding that.
Yep.
So I do have a question. So it, because it's not being called a parent engagement coordinator, but you did say that it's going to involve parent engagement, can you clarify what that really means? I mean, is it just...
In hindsight, we should have wrote the English Learner Services and Parent Engagement.
Okay, so it is English learner and parent, and it sounds like that position already has 21 recommendations that seem to be worked on.
Well, I want to make it clear, though, that that is not the title of the position. The title of the position is Director of English Learner Services. That person, one of their responsibilities will be coordinating parent engagement efforts. I want to make it clear that the primary person that's responsible for that is the school principal. We can't have somebody at the district office responsible for parent engagement. It needs to be the school principal. But this person will work with all of the school principals to help ensure a system of parent engagement at our schools.
Yes.
And, um, so I know that, for example, in the Child Development Program, we do have a district person coordinating some parent programs. And so what are the benefits or challenges of having this person have the title of parent engagement?
I wouldn't, I've been a prince, I was a principal for 10 years. I don't want somebody at the district office working, telling me what to do with my parents. That's my job as a school principal. I mean, that's a primary function of my job as a school. I would disagree with parents that say principals are swamped or too busy to deal with parents. I mean, parents are the number-two stakeholder, students' parents in any school system. And so to say to principals, well, you're no longer responsible for parent engagement, it's going to be somebody down at 720 Santa Barbara Street, I think is really a mistake. Having someone help, provide services, fill in the gaps, ensure that parents are engaged, coordinating those efforts, that's great.
So then will this person only, or, uh, look at parent engagement for English language learners?
Yes.
So that's it, that's, that's the only area?
Yes.
Yes. I hope the job description very clearly delineates what you just said. Where does the assistant superintendent for secondary and elementary, where do they fit into that, that, who does this person report to?
That person reports to the two assistant superintendents. So they'll be our arm in this work. Those, the work that's being described here is our responsibilities as assistant superintendents over those areas. But I think what was being identified here is the monitoring, the follow-through, and all the different details of things that needs to happen, that somebody needs to really pay attention to. And this person will be that person to help us in that work. So just to let you know, in terms of the parent engagement piece, for example, all the information we heard from the DLAC in terms of parent engagement and all those metrics, we, our plan is for this person to work with that, with that plan, and actually help us really fulfill, push forward the fulfillment of that plan through our principals and us.
So one follow-up question. I'm trying to kind of grasp if we, we have a model in place where the principals are responsible for parent engagement. And based on some of the comments we've been hearing through the LCAP process and also the DLAC presentation, it sounds like it's not fully happening everywhere. So what, what system is going to be in place to ensure that piece of it?
Yes, so if you look at, on Action Number 3, Action Number 3 under the same, in the same action, action services.
So you're on the, he's on the LCAP, what page?
If you can, go to, go to page 19. Page 19. Goal 3. Action 3. I don't have a laser on my hand here. So if you go to Action 3, so in looking at this, it says, "Create a Committee of Stakeholders That, That Develops and Acts a Plan to Increase Parent Participation That Reflects the Demographics of the District and School Decision-Making Regarding District and School Priorities," including but not limited to all those areas there. So our first task is to get that person hired. And our instructions to that person is to first gather stakeholders and probably review the DLAC recommendations and anything else that we need to include. From there, they're going to develop a plan to make sure that we are held accountable to following through on the plan. And in there, there'll be matrix that we can use. So accountability will come from us, making sure that the principals follow through on those, on the, on the recommended plan.
All right, so then we should expect to see matrix that include making sure that the principals are, in fact, able to coordinate and...
Absolutely.
Support. That was another word that was used by the parents.
Absolutely. So what we're going to do is describe to the principals an environment that should exist, describe an environment that we want them to create in their sights in terms of parent engagement and EL services. So we will, we will evaluate them based on their ability to be able to fulfill that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And by the way, they'll be a part of, some principals will be a part, will be a part of committee, so it's not, it's not, it won't be as if they will be out of the conversation. Any other questions regarding that? So if you go to Recommendation Number 2, Number 2, Train Counselors on How to Su...
Whoa, 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 you skipped a page.
Did I skip a page there? Oh, thank you. Nice catch. Recommendation Number 2, Process for Reclassification of English Learners. Students change to more students reclassified and done sooner in their educational careers. And that's, that's on page 19. Goal 3, Action 3. Page 11, Goals 1, 2, Actions 1 through 4. So maybe you guys can go there and ask me any questions regarding that.
Just keep going, do we have a question?
Keep going, okay. Recommendation Number 3, Provide Additional Services for English Learner Students to Learn English. As you can see, you can see where the pages are on the LCAP. Recommendation Number 4, More Priority in the Enrollment of Underrepresented Students in Rigorous Classes in Elementary Schools So That They Are Eligible to Take Honors, AP, IB Classes in Secondary Schools. So that's on page 12. Goals 1, Actions 1 and 4. Page 14, Goal 3, Action 7. Next recommendation, Focus on Inclusion of Special Need Students. Page 15, Goal 1, Action 13. Following recommendation, Train Counselors on How to Support Special Need Students Whose Goal is to Attend Post-Secondary Schools. Page 15, Goal 1. Action 11. Goal 2, Action 7. Study Centers, Intervention Programs, and After-School Tutoring. We need to put that in place. Page 12, Goals 1, Action 3. Also on page 13. And also on page 15. Another recommendation, Further Training on Child Find Processes and Procedures. That's on page 13. Goal 2. Actions 9 and 10. On page 11, Goals 1, Action 14 and 2. If I'm going to fast this, uh...
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Tadashi, next page, okay. Training of Administrators and Parents on ELAC and DLAC. Page 19, Goal 3, Action 3. Next, next recommendation, Increase Parent Engagement in All Facets of District and School Activities. Page 19, Goal 3, Action 3. Measure Effectiveness of Parent Engagement. Page 19, Goal 3, Action 3. Training of Parents on How to Contribute and to Understand District and School Plans Related to Student Achievement. Page 19, Goal 3, Action 3. Cultural Proficiency Training for All Staff. Page 19, Goal 3, Action 3. Also, page 11, Goal 1, Actions 10 and 11. If you can go to the next page. Another recommendation is Technology Workshops for Parents. That's on page 19, Goal 3, Action 3. Improve and Expand Interpretation and Translation Services for Parents. Page 19, Goal 3, Action 3. Next one, Improve Behavior-Support Services for Students With Special Needs. Page 16, Goal 1, Action 3. Page 17, Goal 1, Action 1 and 2. Maintain and Expand Schools as Centers for Health and Wellness. Page 18, Goal 4. Actions 4 through 8. And I'd like to invite Mrs. Jetei to come talk about the budget side of the LCAP.
Before we get there, could, do you have any questions or comments about the actions and services and the goals contained in the LCAP?
We do have some public comment. We do have some public comment. Maybe we should hear those three at this point?
Two.
Two? Okay. I didn't pay to have some questions, too.
Okay, I have Annabelle Marino and, oh, yeah, and Joan Stutzler, Stutster? Okay.
Galen Jones. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
It's been a long night, but we're almost there. Good evening, members of the school board and district. My name is Annabelle Moreno and I'm here representing cause and our parent leaders. We're here today to comment on the revised version of the LCAP for the Santa Barbara School District. Despite the fact that some of them could not stay for the meeting longer or could not come at all in person, we were able to review it yesterday at our committee meeting. We went through the whole document and although it wasn't available in Spanish, we translated during the meeting and had everybody review it. On the website, there wasn't a link to it in Spanish, but I'm not sure that might just be a mistake. But the comments that they wanted to present today, first of all, they'd like to say thank you. In reviewing the draft, we were very happy to see several inclusions, as you saw today as well, of the recommendations that were made on May 13th regarding, for example, increased funds for AVID, as well as the hiring of the Director of English Learner Services. So thank you for that and we really look forward to seeing that develop successfully. Number two, in regards to the issue of restorative justice, we did still have some concerns after reviewing it. Nearly 275,000 on the LCAP are being allocated to increase policing, event, event security and canine support. While there are still only 30,000 being allocated to restorative justice training, at the last hearing, we did advocate for restorative justice to be implemented, hopefully at all schools. But it seems that the plan is still that to use these proven approaches at 75% of the schools on the document. With major new spending being proposed on school security, we believe that some of this money should still be spent on ensuring that all students have restorative justice approaches at all schools. Lastly, there are a few other items on the LCAP that parents were very pleased with and they just want to let you know that they want to be kept informed and updated with the details of implementation. These include the portion that talks about the hiring of a parent liaison and the stakeholder committee in priority three, the cohort support mentoring program in priority five, and the extended learning time in priority seven. So just to keep informed and kind of they'd like more explanation on how that's going to develop over time. Thank you for your time and attention and we really hope to continue working closely to see all of these changes succeed for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Joan?
I want to thank everyone for the time you put in to support our children. My name is Joan Stuster and I am an instructor at Antioch University and I work in the Santa Barbara Schools. And I'm also a founding board member of Padres Unidos. And I am here to support the others who have spoken tonight and also at other recent board meetings addressing the LCAP. They explained that programs such as Avance, Maldef, PKE, Padres Arlante and Parent Project have taught them the importance to advocate for their children. And they are requesting a Director of English Learner Services improvements in language access and they stress that the key to student success is parent engagement. If we are serious about ensuring the educational success of all students and empowering them to reach their full potential, as stated in that mission statement behind you, it is important that we not leave the topic of parent engagement to individual school sites alone. The district administration needs to take a leadership role to provide equity to the district as a whole. Quoting the California State Board of Education Policy, number 8901, "A critical dimension of effective schooling is parent involvement. It is most effective when it is comprehensive, supportive, long-lasting and well-planned. Parents come to schools with diverse cultural backgrounds, primary languages and needs. Districts and schools, in collaboration with parents, teachers, students and administrators, must establish and develop efforts that enhance parent involvement and reflect the needs of students and families in the communities in which they serve. It is a matter of social justice. In the words of state policy, parent involvement is larger than improving achievement. It is central to our democracy." In closing, because our English learners may face the biggest challenges posed by the new Common Core standards, let us honor the parent requests and work together with the Director of EL Services to develop and implement more meaningful and effective parent engagement for EL families in all of our schools this coming school year. Last night at my, at my clear credential class at Antioch University, the 15 English language parents and their children who spoke to my class addressed every one of the issues that the board members brought up tonight. Parent engagement is critical. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I want to make sure that the record is very clear. No new funding is being spent on increased security. Zero. That is maintaining the status quo that's having campus, that funding goes for campus supervisors, which have been on our campus for years, and it goes toward providing event security, which means contracting with the police department, with ambulance services, paying security for football games, basketball games and events at schools. So not a single dollar, new dollar is being spent on, in campus security. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
So I'm here to talk a little bit about how the funding works for the LCAP and in the LCFF. This is a document that I created pulling from the calculator that we use to determine our funding. So you can see in 1415, there's a target funding of 120, almost $21 million. Our target gap funding in 202021 is 22,744,087. And our annual gap funding, which we'll get in 1415, if our percentage comes out, the 28.06 percent comes out, it will be 3.4 million or 6.4 million dollars. So what I did is I took a percentage of what our total target is within class size reduction, the career tech education, and got a percentage of the total and applied that percentage to the amount of the annual gap funding. So I can decide, or we can determine how much money of the 6.4 million is for CSR, is for the career tech, and then down at the lower part of it, the supplemental target. So for class size reduction, it's 103, CTE is 73,000. But the big one is the supplemental grant. Our target amount is 11.7 million and it's 9.7% of the total target funding. So the gap funds that we should receive in 1415, additional gap funds is 619,000 dollars, almost 620,000 dollars. And that's for our unduplicated pupil count of EL, low income and foster students. And you will see that in the, it's included in the LCAP and that funding has increased. So, and then our base grant of that 6.4 million, we will get 5.5 million just in the base grant to service all our children in the district. You want to go to the next slide? This is our proportionality percentage. And it's required that we, it's kind of, it's kind of a funky thing because it tells you that, you run through the percentages and tells you how much you need to increase your support, your supplemental grant. However, or your, or your funds that you put towards the children who generate those funds. Well, it's above and beyond what we received last year, 1314, which was what we, what we used, or 1213, which we used to call our EIA money, Environmental Impact Aid. And our percentage is 4.9 for 1415. So I've had many conversations with CDE and FICMAT about this. And that percentage is, for a numbers person, I just wanted to apply that percentage to what I got in EIA in 201213 and said, that's all I have to grow it by. And they're saying, no, you, that's not the case, that you have to, it can be in services, it could be in any kind of way. It doesn't need to be a dollar amount. But I want to ensure you that once we go through this LCAP, that our percentage should only be, or our dollar amount should be just a little over 2.4 million dollars in, to take to the, for the LCAP to support the supplemental kits. And we're spending way more than that. We have about 5.2 million dollars that we have dedicated towards the supplemental, the unduplicated pupil count of our district. So we're doing way better than our percentage here. Any questions?
Any questions at all? I mean, that was very clear. Dr. Cash?
The irony, the irony of this, you're very, that very, with your quick wit noted, that the simplicity of the local control funding formula is yet to be discovered. So, but I have to comment that Ms. Jete, I mean, this is the clearest you could possibly get it explained to you. So I want to thank her for that. We'd be happy to answer any questions on programs, what's in, what's out, what should be in.
Dr. Paz?
I have a general question in terms of what we put in, in the LCAP right now. So the question is related to, we, we note for some of the anticipated expenditures, a particular program or particular entity and a number of cases. And let's just play devil's advocate for one minute and say, one of these ceases to exist before we even truly implement the LCAP. What happens then? For example, page 18, we have noted Hanover Research, right? Let's just say for argument's sake, they go bankrupt tomorrow morning. What happens then?
I presume we don't spend it.
Yeah, that's what I would guess too. It'd probably just fall to the bottom line.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to understand where we, where we beholden to this plan in terms of what we've noted for particular expenditures, where we're not, where we'd beholden to certain anticipated expenditures, where we would not. And my question more to do with, is it necessary to name particular entities or particular strategies by name and not in a more general kind of a way? So for example, you have Hanover Research on that particular one, right?
Right, we have CalSafe.
Yeah. And then if you go down, just go to the next one, you have disaster prep supplies. Not a particular entity, not a company, or even security for events for that matter, right? So wouldn't it be better for us to put it in more general terms?
Well, we don't know what's going to be acceptable or unacceptable for the LCAP by the County Office of Education. And I, we could, we can write it in any way that the board would like us to.
I, I would suggest that we keep it in a more general term, unless it's like a particular program like CalSafe.
So what would you, I, I'm struggling to understand. What would that look like?
So for example, Hanover Research, right?
Uh huh.
Contracted research or something in those lines, something that doesn't necessarily tie us to that particular entity, to that particular organization.
Okay.
So that it reflects more of disaster prep supplies or security for events. It's not a particular security company or firm, but it's more in general.
Okay, all right. Can do.
I would just comment that that's, that's an action item by this board. It's very specific.
I think through this journey, as we sought public input, there were, there were people out there when they didn't see specific programs that we normally dealt with, had concerns, for example, that, that CalSafe one, you know?
Yeah.
Because we didn't identify it, people assumed that we were not going to do it, which is, which is cause consternation out there, which was not necessary.
And I'm, I'm worried on the opposite side, which is we name it and it ceased, ceased to exist, and then what do we do?
I have a clarifying question. So if it's on here, does that also mean, if, because it's a three-year plan, that we have made the commitment to do this for three years?
No.
And therefore it won't come to us as a separate board?
Oh, absolutely not. No. The LCAP by nature, every, every item will be back before you, at a minimum, a year from now.
Okay.
We hope to bring back some sort of halftime report.
And they'll still come back to us as separate items, right? For every contract that we approve or, I'm just trying to make, because I think one of the...
Not for every item, but for many items, yes. I mean, we'll have to, because of the timeliness of it, come forward to you. And from this point forward, it will be, for example, I'll use Hanover. Let's say the decision is made that that's a good contracted service, we want to continue it. The contract's up, I believe in like April, something like that. So it would be before you would probably look at adopting the LCAP. We would say, as part of the LCAP, this would be seen, this, these contracted services.
So the, if we have a contract and the expert, independent of when the expiration is, so if, with a one year or three years, that contract will still come back to us. I guess what I'm trying to make sure is that because it's in the LCAP, we, I don't want to see less things come forward that would otherwise come forward to us, and I don't know if that's the case. I don't know if now, oh, it's in the LCAP, we don't have to take it to the board for annual approval or three-year approval.
No, everything's year to year.
Okay.
You know, some of the things that you didn't see were things that the district had done year after year after year. And, you know, I mean, if the district decided it no longer wanted to have campus supervisors on the high schools, well, that requires us to lay off, I think, eight or nine individuals. So that, you know, that's, that's a process that we'd have to go through in order to do that. The same would be true with Gate, which is on there, which is also personnel heavy. So those are the kinds of things that were, our goal is to engage our community in this, I mean, this has just been a wild ride since January 16th, to be very frank. The idea is, is that our educational leaders are going to come forward with their own list of recommendations as to things they'd like to see gone, streamlined, eliminated, expanded, that are things that our district has done for a long time. We want to evaluate them. I think we talked about one of them. One of them is, we have, this board has consistently reduced class size for ninth grade English. So the question, our first question for Dr. Guillermo, what is, is that an effective use of 331,000 dollars as an improving student achievement, that reduction in class size? So those are the kinds of questions. I expect you and the board to direct staff, direct me. Dave, this is a question that we want to have answered before we're going to vote next year on putting this in the LCAP. So I look forward to those.
I wonder if we can actually, if, in the case of Hanover Research, if we can, knowing that we identified a certain organization, we can put that in parentheses, but actually the actual, it'll be some adjective describing the service.
Yeah.
And then in parentheses.
Parenthesis, example, Hanover Research, something like that. I just feel a little more comfortable doing that, not knowing, for the, for the precise same reason, not knowing, you know, at the end of the day, you know, not feeling beholden to something we're putting down on paper. And it may turn out to be no problem, but it may turn out to be a problem.
Makes sense.
Just a general question, but I don't know. So my general question is what got left out? What are big things that, because I mean, our money only goes so far and now there's talk about school districts heavily contributing to the STIRS contribution. So this might change again, based on our funds, but what got left out? Big things that got left out?
Left out that we're currently doing or left out from the recommendations?
Both.
Wow.
I mean, not a list of all of them, I just, what are some of the things?
We'd be here, we'd be here for a couple of days if we listed all the stuff.
All right, so give me the top five.
We did, we did get a report on that.
We got a... We got a budget.
Right.
But I didn't see the right...
We got a list of items that are not included and a list of items, new items that are included. I thought I had a copy, but I don't have it, but it was a...
So the budget, because I saw a budget.
Yeah, uh-huh. Yes, that's it.
It was a list of items.
On a budget, that's it?
Correct.
But those, but those were not recommendations, right? Those were just things we used to do, or?
No, I mean, one recommendation that we didn't include was to hire, there was no specific number, but hire, hire more instructional, hire, hire more food service workers, hire more custodians. It was from, hire more classified staff, was one that we got. That's, that, the only part of that's included is in the maintenance area.
There you go.
So, so just let you, so what you see here is something that Ms. Chitay is able to say that we can do. So, so the, so the services that were not included, whether because of money or whatnot, like I said, Dr. Cash, it is a big list of that. So this is something that gives us a balanced budget that we feel that we can do.
Right, so the list, the budget that we got is of the things that we were doing. It said, here's how much it cost us and here's what we're not doing. But so I guess, so what...
Mr. Herron has it.
Right, so what, but those don't include recommendations?
We did not list all the recommendations and say...
Right, so I'm just trying to figure out, so if the public says, because there were so many recommendations, what were, what are the things that public might come back and say, you know what, this was a common item that we emailed and it didn't get included?
Well, we'd be glad to address the public when they do that. And if you'd like us to compile a list, I suppose we could, could do that. We haven't done that.
No, I was just thinking like, top things. I mean, I didn't know if that worked.
Well, we think we included all the top things.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I would say the LCAP committee would say, correct?
Yeah. I mean, there were some, there were some adjustments we made on cost and we had to rethink, like the elementary counselor, social workers, that construct has changed to some other plan that we're going to have, which reduced the cost of it. So adjustments like that were made throughout, throughout the LCAP. But all the top, all the top things that people wanted in there, we were able to include.
The things that I heard over and over again were the things I heard again tonight. The Director of English Learner Services, extended learning time for English learner students, study centers and intervention centers during the school day. All of the items that were repeated over and over again, I think they're in the plan.
Except for the parent coordinator, because that one was a really loud and clear one, and that one.
You mean a separate administrative position for...
Well, they had talked about the coordinator position.
That's correct. That is not, there were six separate coordinator positions that were recommended. And we've included one, the Director of English Services.
Ms. Allison?
I'm happy to see the attention to the A to G and all the, this is on page four of 22 on the far left. And my question, you know, there's pretty specific items listed under identified matrix, semester counselor, check on each individual pupil's schedule for each semester. And just, you know, very specific things that understandably would be wonderful. My question is, when looking at that, does that add necessary time for counselors? I mean, so something like that, where, if that's not being for each student?
Yeah, great, great question. I think one of the most intriguing things about this LCAP is, for Emilio Handel and I to sit down with our new, with Chelsea, our new research analyst, to actually go through all those metrics and help us formulate how we're going to measure all those things. So if it comes to where that matrix is something impossible for us to get to, that's something that we're going to have to come back to you at some point and say, in our interim reviews with you, to say, you know, we're struggling with this matrix because we can't, we can't meet it, we need to adjust it, or...
So basically, this is an expectation?
Yes.
And then we're going to see and play with what, what that's going to look like?
Yeah, it's, you know, I mean, this is so difficult to be able to say, this is exactly what we're going to do, and we've never done it before, and we don't even know if it's effective. I think what I'm hearing you ask, though, the question is, will fundamentally some of the day-to-day responsibilities of counselors change? And I would say they'd have to.
Okay.
Fundamentally, they'd have to change.
And then if the resources to do that are not in place, can, is that adjustable, or are we pretty much set with what we have?
Well, in the LCAP, you'll note that we have maintained the status quo, which is to hire three, a counselor essentially at each high school to reduce their caseload. And that money used to come from a very specific categorical program, which has been subsumed by the local control funding formula. So if there are additional resources that are required, then, then those would have to be supplied and then something else wouldn't be done, kind of deal. Is what, what will, that's what will happen in the subsequent years with the LCAP, is this worked, this didn't. If you want to do more of this, what are we going to do less of over here?
Right. Okay.
I have a question on page 11. Couple of things towards the bottom, or the whole thing. One is iPad deployment. It was in and then it got taken out in 215, 216. The other is the sixth grade outdoor science camp. It looks like on page 11, it's in 2014 and 2015, but it's not in 2016 on this page. But on the next page, it is in the, all three years. And in the third years, it jumps to 275,000. I just wonder if that's a misprint and is it really 175 like on the other years? If you look on the right-hand column bottom...
What page is that?
On page 11. Excuse me, it, it says...
Is that a number?
Yeah. If you look on pa, I guess page 12 is the, what I think is, it might be a typo, typo. Right-hand column, point four, under anticipated expenditures, outdoor science camp in grade six, 275, where if you look across to the other two years, it's 266, 263 down to 175.
So that's a Mr. Handel question. Is it 175 or 275?
I'm so glad you asked. Today we were, during the process of revising the LCAP, we, we tried to look at numbers of how many sixth graders we actually had. So when we initially input the number, we figured about 1,000, but we had to, when we took a look at the numbers, we saw that there was a lower number. So what you see up in the right-hand column, I believe it says...
Year three.
Year three, says 275. I believe it's 175 for all of our sixth graders to go. So what I, what I believe you see in that last column is a typo, because you'll notice in the left-hand column, it's 175, the middle column, it's 175, and it didn't get input correctly in the last column.
That's what I was thinking.
Yes.
I noticed, though, in, on page 11, bottom, all the referenced iPads have been stricken.
They're in, they're in next year, and we didn't feel that it was appropriate to put it in until the board continued, the board made a decision on the pilot program.
Okay, but let's say the board did make the decision, is any money left over?
Well, we don't know.
We don't know.
Yeah. I mean, we know, we know what, I mean, we have our best estimates, and if the gap funding fill-in continues as estimated, yes, there would be.
Okay, so, they're big numbers. And then I guess the other question I have on the science camp, I think it's great that we're doing it. But after doing it for three years, and if I recall correctly, a part of that sum comes from the parcel tax.
No, none of it comes from the parcel tax.
I didn't see that.
That's science, the science instructional materials.
Okay, so this, okay, so the, so the bottom of the first column, 2014-15 on page 11, that 200 and, 350,000 of which 250 comes from parcel tax, that's nothing to do with science camp?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so the science camp does not come from parcel tax?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, is that something that we're going to be able to continue? I mean, it's one of those things that, once you start doing it, taking it away, it's going to be very difficult.
That's correct.
So it, we're in for the long pull.
Well, I think the issue quite, was really framed as an equity issue. We had some schools going and some not going, and the schools that weren't going weren't necessarily our poorest schools, because they were able to use Title I funds, or more of our schools that had, still had high incidence of poverty students, but didn't reach the threshold for a significant Title I allocation, and they couldn't fundraise to go.
Okay. But I think in the journey of going through the LCAP year by year, I'm sure you'll be asking what's effective, what's not effective. And, and if we can't deliver an answer for you, I think that's, it's going to have to be a discussion.
And a question in terms of what Mr. Droudi said before, in terms of looking at some of the indicators, measures we're going to use as we move forward, looking at a baseline and trying to understand that as we move forward. One of the things that I would love to see us as a board do, as a leadership team really, is to sit down and, and look at that, and all be on the same page in terms of where we're starting. I know you're alluding to maybe looking at all our district data and finding out where our gaps are going to be in terms of our ability to establish a baseline and then move forward from that point. But having us all on that same page, I think, is really going to be critical, because then we're not unnecessarily putting an expectation where we shouldn't or we can't. And on the other side of it, is trying to understand that we have this much room to go, or in some cases, we have this much to go in, in certain areas. And I think that's, that's really going to be important, especially for us as board members to articulate that to the public, to say, you know, that is in the LCAP, but frankly speaking, we're not going to get to it until X year, or way off in the future. So I think that's something I would look, look for us to consider in the future as a board, as a leadership team, with Dr. Cash.
We, yeah, one of the issues is, we would love to do that, but I don't know when we're going to have assessment data. That's wherever, we got every kid taken, you know, and we got individual scores. I, I hope, you know, it, I mean, right now, there's even talk about having next year be a pilot again for smarter balance.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
And I understand that.
So secondary schools, though, I think we're in a good spot, because we still have, we got the high school exit exam, which every student takes. All eleventh graders will continue to take the EAP. We'll still have data on SAT, ACT, A, P, I, B. We'll have data on enrollment data, we'll have suspension, attendance, expulsion data. We'll have a lot of baseline data that we'll share with you.
But I think that's the point. Even, even your comment right now is the point I'm trying to make, which is to say, there are places where we don't have it, there are places where we will have it. And I think being able to have that, that sort of discussion and being able to be on the same page, and so that, again, we are not necessarily putting undue expectations on, on, on staff, on you, Dr. Cash, to say, well, I thought we were going to be on this. No, you're not. In fact, the reality is the opposite. So I think that, for me, would be really helpful as we move forward. And I think it would also be helpful, again, to articulate to the public and to have that expectation, so we're all on the same page, and that we can move forward in a way that, you know, brings reality into perspective.
So are you thinking like a data summit?
Something along those lines.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Got it.
Ms. Allison?
I'd like to go back, go back to Dr. Cash mentioning the safety issue, because you made it pretty strong that it's not changing. And I look at the numbers here on page 18, page 18 of 22. And does that concern you, or do you feel that, you're stating that as what the reality is?
Correct. That is, the reality is, is that there was no change in our personnel in relationship to campus security officers, and we're anticipating that we would continue to spend the same amount of money for our events.
And do you feel things are less secure in making that? I mean, is there reason to be concerned that things have not changed there?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify how that, what impression that left with me.
Just a couple of questions on some of the things that aren't in there, because we have been asked about them. Last, last time we talked about this, the AVENTA program had a lot of people, and there's $50,000 being cut. But am I, am I correct in my thinking that our program, we're going to substitute, is a broader, more, more effective program? So if somebody says, hey, you cut AVENTA, our response is, we've got a better program?
It's A through G compliant.
Okay. And then the other couple of things, LaMaster training is cut 48,000, and the FOS materials are cut 60 or 70,000, and context for learning is cut. What about those things? Are those his program, are they, I think we heard, we got a memo that FOS might be replaced, or the funding may become from some other source.
Parcel tax.
From parcel, okay. But LaMaster, and you, $48,000. Are we going to be hit by parents who say, why did you cut LaMaster? Or teachers, why'd you cut it?
We, we have a different professional learning model, which is the use of the TOSSs, PLCs. LaMaster was a model in which somebody came from outside, taught us something and left, whereas right now, we have something more robust, yes.
We probably won't get any complaints over that.
No.
Okay.
You're playing defensive, right?
Soon as we cut something, somebody loves it. Anything else?
Yeah.
Any comments from you guys?
Well, we'd like to bring this back with the budget and the sequence for events, is that you adopt the LCAP first in a public meeting, a public hearing adoption, or is it just an action item? No, a public hearing. And then, you know, you would get the, the budget, which Meg will have available as well. So I'm, I'm serious. Ms. Lamone asked a, a heavy question. Are you, and we can probably generate the list of items that were recommended. Would you like to see that prior to the next, the next board meeting?
Well, I think it depends how easy or hard. I just feel like, at least I did not see the multitude of emails that went to you, and so it's hard to know what wasn't included. And so I think I can guess, but if it's, I don't necessarily need a strategic plan type of report, so I don't know how easy it would be, but I think it would be useful to know, these are items that the community asked for that we were not able to offer. I mean, primarily because of budget. And so I would also be okay with just, what are some of those common items? I'm guessing that there's some items on there that four or five people asked for and didn't get on. So I think depending on how easy it is to get that information, it would, it would provide better, I think, context for me to know, here's what made it in and here's what didn't.
Maybe the top, top 10?
Something like that.
Top 10 in, as far as like, cost or the number of people that wanted that, something like that?
I think for me, the number of people that wanted something like that.
Okay, so if one person requested something, that wouldn't be something that you would...
No, I mean, I'm just thinking of big item things that didn't get on, and I think it's also useful to know, if we are going to be approving this, what are some of those popular items that didn't make it on that might be worth considering at some point in the future, if all our money doesn't go towards the other contributions?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We have nothing to go back for on number H. Thank you for everybody for, and just all of this work. It's unbelievable, you know? And time-consuming and detailed, and I'm glad you, these made a little bit bigger copy. That's nice.
We'll continue to make big copies of that document.
And any members of public who are listening, if you want a big copy, we have them here. There's a stack of them, you can...
They're available in the superintendent's office, both in Spanish and English.
In English, good. Okay. Nothing to return to, coming events. I mean, we're, we had all the major events the last two weeks, it's been amazing. Anything else coming that anybody wants to talk about? Future agenda items?
The future agenda item. I'd like to see a presentation from AHA. I know they've been working, doing work around or in collaboration with us for restorative approaches, and so I'm just curious. So perhaps late summer, early fall, or something like that?
Will do.
And not agenda item, but just a need. I noticed that we're now on Spanish language TV every Tuesday morning, and on our screen, what we talk about, go to a, go to channel 18, you might want to add, in Spanish, on Tuesdays from nine, at nine o'clock, I think it is. It might be good to add that into our, into our everyday system. Now, the other is, I have been reminded that this is the time of year that we can save money on trash pickup, and that it's up to each site to let MarBorg know whether or not they need a site pickup on a regular basis. not they need a site pickup on a regular basis.
Mr. Yank does that.
Yeah, and, so it's, I get reminded of it, so we might want to remind everybody else, because there's a lot of money, that if they come and nothing to pick up, we still get charged. So, thank you.
Good job, Mr. Herron.
Oh, meeting closed.